Good evening, everybody. My name is Prashar Patel and I'm Vice Chair of the Finance Committee and Chair of the Guidelines Subcommittee. I'm chairing the public hearing tonight in lieu of our Chair Peggy Briggs, who couldn't attend today. Thank you for coming to this hearing, public hearing. In June 2022, the Select Board approved the dates of the Finance Committee's public hearings for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. The Finance Committee will hold three public hearings this month to review articles on the annual town meeting warrant that may or may not have a financial or that may have a financial impact on town, sorry about that. Tonight, we will be hearing from the town on its proposed fiscal year 24 operating and capital budgets on free cash and other warrant articles. We'll also hear about proposed funds for affordable housing and appropriations for the 250th celebration. We'll also hear from the Community Preservation Committee. I encourage everyone to review the fiscal year 24 managers' proposed budget plan, which is accessible on the Finance Department section of the town website, and we have copies here on the table as well. After this public hearing, the Finance Committee will hear from the town's schools on March 9th and from the town's enterprise funds on March 15th, including the BD Fitness Center, the Light Plant, Water and Sewer, and PEG, the town's media division. I encourage everyone to attend those hearings as well. As with all public events, we expect a civil dialogue. We will not tolerate ad homine or personal attacks. The purpose of the public hearings is for article sponsors to present and solicit public input on each warrant article. Each article affects life in Concord for our residents, businesses, town employees, and town visitors. Questions are encouraged. However, please keep in mind that presenters may not be able to answer all the questions this evening. However, be assured that your questions and input will be considered as they develop final presentations for annual town meeting. Copies of all public hearing presentation materials and the agendas for each Finance Committee public hearing will be posted and available on the annual town meeting section of the town's website, along with copies of the recordings of each public hearing. These public hearings are being recorded on Zoom and will be accessible on the town's YouTube site. Finance Committee public hearings are also being livestreamed on the town's Minuteman Media Government website. I expect presenters to take no more than five minutes. Members of the public should limit their comments to one minute. If you're in the public hearing room, please stand up and listen and line up at each microphone. We've got two of them here. If you're on Zoom, please select the raise hand function in Zoom. Please be patient as we want to give everyone a chance to speak. After the Finance Committee closes each public hearing, the committee will meet immediately after in regular session to vote on positions for each of its public hearing warrant articles. These regular sessions are also open to the public. Some other calendar reminders before we get started. Don't forget that the annual town election is on March 28th, and the annual town meeting will be on Sunday, April 30th at the Concord Carlisle High School. Lastly, we have learned that the planning board is in the process of rescheduling their public hearings for later in March. Please be on the lookout for a notice about the due date, about the date for that. Thank you. I will, I'm scheduled to present the first article, and then I'm going to turn it over to Gail Dowd, the town's Chief Financial Officer. We get the first article, number three, up on the screen, please, Chris. Thank you. So this is a procedural article outlining the meeting procedures for town meetings. Our Chair Peggy Briggs is going to move that the town adopt a rule of the meeting resolution as printed in the handout applicable to this article. Next slide. The purpose is to hold spending within the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2. It's been a routine article since 1992. All appropriation articles will remain open and may be amended until the meeting adjourns. Next slide. Meeting procedure for appropriations. Any motion to increase any spending item above the proposed budget must specify the amount of the increase, the source of funding, which can be corresponding decrease of other items, Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, or use of other available funds. Next slide. Appropriations. Reduction of a borrowing authorization is not a source of funding for fiscal year 24 operating expenses. Next slide. Debt authorizations. Any motion to increase a borrowing item for which debt services to be covered within the levy limit must specify the amount of the increase, the source of funding, which can be either corresponding reduction of other borrowings within the levy limit or a Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion. Next slide. And then this meeting procedure just restates what Chairman Briggs is going to move, that the town adopt a rule of the meeting resolution as printed in the handout applicable to this article. Any questions? Hearing none? Anything, anyone on Zoom? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. And I think Chris is going to pull up Article 7 slides for me. It gets interesting to figure out which glasses I need to wear to see the screen and the notes. This article is to move the use of free cash. So this would be Chair Briggs as well moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 7 to authorize and direct the assessors to transfer $1 million from free cash to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Do you want to go to the next slide, please? This is just a little primer on what free cash is. It is the town's undesignated fund balance. It is generated if we have instances in which actual revenue collected exceeds our estimates and when actual expenditures are less than what the appropriations were. Free cash is certified each year by the Department of Revenue, and it is available for appropriation after certification at any regular or special town meeting. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the town's adopted free cash policy. Free cash should be maintained at a level between 5% and 10% of the general fund budget. It should only be used to provide property tax relief, that it should only be used to the extent that it can be replenished in the following year. And if it rises above 10%, town management will consider recommending using the excess in the following ways, either for capital items or for general fund stabilization funds. Next slide, please. This chart shows the amount of free cash certified over the last several fiscal years. Just an item of note, we are currently in the process of getting the 22 value certified with the Department of Revenue. It is currently estimated at $7,558,250. We are comfortable and confident in that number. We're just going through the actual certification process. Next slide, please. This is an eye chart. I apologize. I was not able to make it larger on the slides. This is an estimate of free cash, which shows the beginning balance at the $7.5 million from the prior slide, which is below the maximum amount, but it is above the 5% threshold. So we are within the limits set by the town policy. This also shows what the ending balance could be if all of the free cash appropriations currently within the town meeting warrant were utilized. If all are approved, town free cash would be reduced to $6,388,250 or 5.6%, which again is still slightly above the stated policy limits. And then next slide, please. And then again, this is just to have it move forward at town meeting to utilize the million to reduce the tax levy.
Great. Thank you, Gail. Any questions? Nope.
Gail, could you please go back and review that, the last slide? For a minute? Not that one. Not that one, that one.
Thank you, Chris.
Am I, am I correct in hearing you say that we're going to have a $6.58 million at the end of this year?
That is an estimate if the articles within the town meeting warrant are approved. That assumes that revenue comes in at budget and expenses are at budget. That does not assume.
Then in, my further question is, in the in the letter associated with this, it was like a four-page letter from our town manager. On the first page, it talks about the overall general fund expenditures are projected to increase by 5.91%. And that the unused levy capacity is projected to be $2.9 million or approximately 2.76%, which is significantly lower than the historical level of closure to 5%. So can you explain the difference between the 2.76% and the 5.26% to me?
Is that the tax levy number that?
Property taxes as a source.
The unused levy. I didn't have a topic. That is the unused tax levy, not the free cash balance.
Okay. Thank you. Bring that letter with me.
Thanks, Dean. Any other questions from Finance Committee members? And on Zoom, Brian, John, Lois? Oh, any?
So, Gail, going back to that chart again, so the articles that you assumed are this million, a million for free cash and 250 related to the stabilization reserve. So that's on top of the 750 coming from the.
That was based from the tax levy. The 750 is from the tax levy, not from free cash.
Right. Okay. So that says we might, we'll add a million stabilization between those two. And those are the only two items that we've assumed?
Those are the only two items assumed, as those are the only two items within the warrant as it was printed that had a request from free cash.
Okay. But we know there may be some others, right? We're going to talk about one of them tonight, I think.
If those were, we could update it, but those were based upon what was printed.
Okay. And the percentage is where? It's 5. What if those two things are done?
Both of them are, it would be 5.06.
And our limit is 5? Okay. So we don't really have any room left in free cash, is what you're telling us?
With the correct, with the assumption that we haven't anticipated revenues higher or expenses. This assumes the budget is.
Right. Assuming there's no other surplus that we're unaware of. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see question, I don't see questions from the public. So let's go to the next article, Article 8, Fiscal Year 23 Budget Line Item Adjustments. Yep, you're up again.
I was ready to sit down. Thank you, Chris, if you could pull these up as well. Currently, we do not anticipate having any budget line item adjustments. We do continue to review the projections, and if this were to change, we would update our presentation at annual town meeting. But what I did want to do, Chris, if you want to forward it a slide, one more, sorry about that, is to walk through how this would work if we were to have line item adjustments that we were briefing for. So this is to walk through what would happen if we did come to town meeting moving forward in article because there were line item adjustments. Unlike other operating budgets, mainly the school and the enterprise funds, the town's budget is appropriated by town meeting in 16 distinct line items. Line items 1 through 10 are what are the guideline budgets. 11 through 16 appropriate fixed costs, and those are costs shared between the town and the Concord Public School. Once those are appropriated, the town manager must manage to the bottom line of each one of those 16 line items, rather than what's often referred to as the bottom line approach, which it would be the schools and the enterprise funds. Adjustments to the budget are only allowed either by town meeting action, as would be requested here, or under the authority of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B. Great read if people are still awake after some of these meetings. These remedies are the legally preferred, which would be to go to town meeting, meaning that if town meeting has an opportunity to review and vote on them, that would be the preferred method over the statutory process that is, would require us to go through the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Next slide, please. The reason why we may have instances in which we have to do budget line item adjustments is, as you can tell, the budgets are done well in advance. We're here tonight presenting the fiscal 24 budget, so a lot of items can change between now and June of 2024. If we were to come forward with any adjustments, we would have information about the proposed adjustment. We would also talk about the source of the transfer and both why the adjustments were needed and why the budget appropriation within other line items would be available to fund it. What is important to note is that this transfer does not increase the total appropriation. It would be transferred within individual line items. Next slide, please. What would happen if the adjustments were not approved at town meeting? We would then revert to seek the year-end adjustment under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, which would be allowable within May 1st and July 15th with the approval of both the Finance Committee and the Select Board. If either one of those options did not pass it, the year-end transfer is not approved. We would have what is deemed an illegal deficit that would need to be raised in a like amount in the following year during the tax setting process. Next slide. And currently, we do not anticipate needing to bring forth a motion under this.
Thank you, Gail. Any questions from Finance Committee? Routine article. Lois, Brian, John? Any comments from the public? I don't see any here on Zoom. None. Okay. So let's move to the next article, which is Article 9, a fiscal year 2024 budget. There, I'll give you 10 minutes.
I'll do my best. Good evening. I'm Carrie LaFleur. I'm the town manager. This is the fiscal 24 budget presentation. We typically do a handout at town meeting because of the length of the motion, because we have to specify all of the sources of funding, which tend to be more than 100 words. We don't have that yet put together, but we will for town meeting. Next slide. I actually won't go through this because Gail just walked through this in the last presentation, but it just talks about the difference in the manner of appropriation of the town's budget. So slide 3, please. This slide shows a summary of the line item appropriations on the left and a summary of the various funding sources on the right. I guess people are having trouble seeing that. I think we do a handout for this as well at town meeting. As you can see, there are a variety of funding sources that support the town's operating budget, including property tax, local receipts, transfers from enterprises, and other special funds. Next slide. Slightly easier to read. The town's budget process is a lengthy one, beginning in early fall and concluding in late February, in time for the public hearing process. The fiscal 24 budget process began in earnest in October and through a series of internal meetings with department managers and then meetings both with the Finance Committee and Select Board, has resulted in the recommended budget being presented today. This slide highlights the key budget dates, including the various Finance Committee meeting hearings. Next slide. Historically, the Finance Committee's guideline process has included a review of both our operating and tier-one capital expenditures. For reference, tier-one capital refers to vehicle and equipment purchases with an overall with a cost of less than $250,000. The fiscal 24 guideline provided an overall increase of 5% or $1.586 million. Of this amount, $1,370,000 was allocated to operating and $216,000 in additional funds allocated to tier-one capital. While we worked diligently to meet this guideline, it was not possible to do so while meeting the service-level demands and implementing the new class and comp plan, which is needed in order to provide competitive wages to employees. We are, however, able to bridge the gap by proposing to carry forward some additional funds or unspent balances from a prior year to make these one-time adjustments in salaries as a result of the class and comp plan and keep the new money requests at the fiscal 24 FinCom guideline. Next slide, please. We began our fiscal 24 budget process by identifying the four strategic issues listed here on the slide, and our entire budget process was built around addressing these issues. Next slide. An employer of choice is one that offers competitive wage benefits, wage and benefit packages, provides opportunities for professional growth and development, and is equitable, inclusive, and fosters a sense of belonging. The town of Concord strives to be an employer of choice and has committed to offering total compensation packages that are in line with peer communities, addressing compensation of targeted positions for which recruitment and retention has been particularly difficult, and working with the Personnel Board and departments to redraft outdated policies, procedures, and practices to reflect our commitment to attract and retain a diverse staff and foster an inclusive work environment. To that end, in fiscal '23, the town hired a class and comp consultant. We've been working diligently on that project. The results of that is an article that you heard a little bit about on Monday evening, and we are hoping that the community will support that at annual town meeting. On the other side of the slide, we have shown a cost of employee turnover calculator. This is something that I think is important to take note of in our Public Safety and Public Works Departments, where we have to bring people in on overtime if we have positions vacant or additional work. It's much easier to see what the hard cost is associated with that. But in many of our departments, we don't bring in people when we have vacant positions, and we rely on the goodwill of those staff. But just looking at or making the assumption of an average salary of about $70,000, which is right around what our average salary is here. When we have turnover, it's pretty significant, whether we're calculating it and it's a hard cost or it's something that we're absorbing. And that's something that we, we'd like people to be cognizant of, because it's harder and harder to attract and retain employees, and there is a cost, whether it's a hard cost or a soft cost. Next slide. The town's form of government relies upon boards and committees which meet in the evening. It's increasingly difficult for us to get staff to cover these meetings. We offer meetings in a variety of formats. You know, just from the start of this meeting, the technology that's involved in hosting a hybrid meeting in particular, which often requires us to have more staff than we typically would. So this is something that it's important to us. We have a lot of boards and committees in town. We want to do our best to support boards and committees, and there is a staff cost associated with that. Next slide. So on an annual basis, the town has dedicated about $1.5 to $2 million to pavement management activities. But on an annual basis, the cost is closer to about $3.5 million. There are additional public infrastructure costs that are about $1.5 million per year based on our various maintenance plans. We definitely need to be doing more here than what we have been doing in the past. We do include this. It's not an operating cost, but it is, it does impact what's available for operations in our tier-one capital. And so we wanted to mention that here. Next slide. I'm moving as fast as I can. I'm not speaking very clearly. I apologize for that. Our next initiative, we call welcoming community or community support. As the town awaits legislative approval for the local option surcharges to create a steady and constant revenue source for affordable housing, town meeting has annually appropriated funds from free cash to advance these initiatives. The availability of free cash is limited, as the town also uses this to reduce property taxes and recently redirected $2.5 million to the Middle School Stabilization Fund, proposing another $250,000 at this annual meeting. Nevertheless, affordable housing remains a top priority, and there will be a strong interest in allocating additional funding in this direction until the local option surcharges have been approved. Public transportation, both for residents and visitors, has been an ongoing issue. And recent efforts to expand services have been very slow. We haven't made as much progress as we'd like to. This past year, we had a pilot program for our trolley service. Though it was aimed at services, we do have evidence that it did provide limited service to residents as well. We heard from a number of residents who did jump on the trolley to get across town. We are in the process of submitting a flat federal land access grant, and we hope to be successful and have a more permanent transportation plan that would match the needs of tourists and residents, so that we could provide some in-town transportation. And the last item I want to mention here is that there's always been a steady need in Concord relative to social service issues. Prior to the pandemic, the majority of our issues were related to unemployment, childcare, food security. What we're seeing post-pandemic is a greater need for mental health services. And so we're trying to beef up our offerings there. We've had some recent success in securing a grant for a part-time position with our police department. And the fiscal 24 budget allocates funding to ensure that these services continue, whether or not we're successful with grants in the future. Next slide. Next, we identified costs associated with these strategic issues. Approximately 60% of the budget increase will go toward wage adjustments to more closely align salaries with market and increase our ability to retain and attract employees. About 14% will be dedicated to tier-one capital, allowing us to properly maintain our assets and meet policy objectives. Another 13% will be spent on increased utility and commodity costs. And I've also identified $820,000 in ARPA spending, which you'll see on the last slide. Next slide. I wanted to specifically spend a bit of time on our new FTEs. The proposed budget increases FTE count by a net of 5.15. It's important to view this in the context of a couple of decisions that were made in fiscal '23. One and a half FTEs was committed in '23 after the adoption of the budget and funded through the use of ARPA. This commitment was to increase our part-time transportation plan into full-time and to add a full-time economic vitality manager position. So again, these were done post-2022 annual town meeting and not a part of the fiscal '23 appropriation. Included in fiscal '24 is .84 FTEs to advance specific and discrete projects. These are staff we don't expect or FTE count we don't expect to see in fiscal '25. Now, the plan does include a second full-time position in the cemetery division that will be covered 100% by the cemetery fund and two positions in recreation that are funded through the Recreation Revolving Fund versus the general fund. So the net general fund-supported FTE increase in fiscal 20 I'm forgetting what year it is. Fiscal '24 is 2.31, including an assistant fire chief, a departmental assistant in inspections, and a public health nurse with the Board of Health. The assistant fire chief position will be the second for the department and will complete the command structure for the department, focusing primarily on operations and training. The position will be responsible for oversight of the department's EMS program, including all training related to EMS, staff licenses, certification, ambulance license certifications, and everything that goes along with that. Additionally, the position will be responsible for oversight and training, oversight of the department for all training, then including fire training, which encompasses all hazards within the department's area of responsibility, including emerging hazards, which, if you tune into the Select Board, it seems like every once in a while we talk about the new fire hazards associated with batteries. So we have battery backup systems and there's special. So we have uh battery backup systems and and there's special training that goes along with being able to address emergency situations there. So this assistant chief will be focusing on training. And finally, we'll be in charge of development and implementation of a new performance improvement program to evaluate personnel on skills required during fire suppression activities. The department assistant in the inspections division will provide general support to residents and businesses, seeking permits, freeing up our field staff for their inspections. And then finally, up until a few months ago, the town had a contract with Emerson Home Care for contracted part-time public health nursing services. But recently, with little notice, that contract was canceled. The demand for services was strong through the pandemic, but even stronger post-COVID. Um, again, most notably in the area of mental health services. The demand is so strong that it could no longer be met with contracted part-time services. The fiscal twenty-four budget includes funding for for a full-time position, but we do believe there's an opportunity for us to partner with a neighboring community to to share a public health nurse. So we are we are actively involved in in looking into that. Finally, in addition to the staffing increases, we have proposed to consolidate all facilities-related expenses under the Facilities Department and all technology-related expenses under the Technology Department. You can see this if you're looking at the um in the warrant for the article. You can see the large increases in line one C and one E, and that's because we're transferring expenses that used to be in other departments in there. And we are hoping that we'll achieve some cost savings, service level efficiencies, and better strategic management of these assets. So next slide, just quickly going through our non-guidelines accounts, which are part of this particular warrant article. Um, these are the joint accounts such as insurance, debt service, and retirement expense. These items total twenty-three point two million. They're approximately forty-one point eight percent of the town's budget and summarized here. Next slide. I guess I I should mention that these joint expenses are both for the town and Concord Public Schools. So all of the fixed costs for Concord Public Schools are appropriated under the town's non-guidelines budget. So group insurance, this is the largest expense in this category. Um, this is health insurance, dental, life insurance benefits, again, both to the town and CPS employees. The town offers four health insurance plans, including multiple high deductible plans, which provide for about a twenty percent decrement in premium. So we spend a lot of time educating employees on the benefits of of a high deductible plan and try to move them in that direction. Next slide. Retirement assessment, the Concord uh the town of Concord is part of the Concord Retirement System. The town is the single largest member. Um, other members are the Regional School District and the Housing Authority. Each year, the town pays an annual assessment to the retirement system based upon the actuarial valuation of the system assets and benefits owed. Uh, the town funds its annual assessment from two sources, the annual budget appropriation and a transfer from our pension reserve account. And and that was established several years ago with the purpose of being able to smooth out the annual increase in the pension assessment. The town is nearing the end of its funding schedule, and um as a result, it's been able to increase the amount coming from the pension reserve account and decrease the impact to the general fund budget. The town's plan um or the retirement system's plan is fully fully funded as of fiscal twenty-eight, subject to the the one-one valuation, which we know will will go down because of how the market did this past year. But as of one-one-twenty-two, the system was ninety-three percent funded, making it one of the top-funded systems within the Commonwealth. Next slide. Moving on to debt service, this is the second largest expense in this category. It includes annual debt service payments associated both within the levy and excluded debt. In total, the town's fiscal twenty-four debt service expenses projected at just under twelve million dollars, up about a million dollars due to the impact of the middle school construction project. And then finally, and I would imagine this is probably going to be even harder, this next slide, Chris. Even harder to read. So I'll tell you what it says. In fiscal twenty-two, the town was awarded five point six million dollars in ARPA funding. This is American Rescue Plan Act grant funds coming from the the federal government under the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. At the Select Board's recommendation and as part of the development of the annual operating and capital plan, the town will plan to program about twenty-five percent of the grant awards each year from fiscal twenty-three to twenty-six, at which point we expect a hundred percent of the grant funds to be committed. While these grant funds do not need to be appropriated by Town Meeting, the proposed plan for fiscal twenty-four spending is shown here. You just can't read it. Um, as you can see, or you can't see, the vast majority of proposed spending is for infrastructure or for plans or work that will inform future infrastructure projects. All but one of the proposed funding purposes is for one-time expense. The only recurring expense here is for the advancement of DEI initiatives. There is seventy-five thousand dollars, which is included here, and we expect that to be more uh those costs to be more uh fully rolled into the general fund budget using tax dollars beginning in fiscal twenty-five. Um, I know on Monday evening, there was an article about the DEI director, and if I could just take one minute to talk about that. So as Gail mentioned, we're and I mentioned earlier earlier in the presentation, we are putting our budget together in September, October, November. Sometime during that period, I had an informal meeting with the uh some representatives of the DEI Commission, and we talked about um sort of the beginning of what their work plan was. They identified three projects at very high level and some real rough estimates on cost of of completing those projects. And so two of them, they they were looking at a a calendar year. I'm looking at a fiscal year. So the seventy-five thousand dollars was arrived based at two, the first two projects that they had identified. Now, this was months and months ago. This was before there was discussion about a a director, a full-time position. Um, as as you know, the timing, the timing is difficult. We had closed out our budget process when there was talk about the the full-time director position. So it was just really hard to be able to to pull that in into the budget. But we do have the seventy-five thousand dollars. It's um it is identified now for programming. It doesn't mean it couldn't be used for something different, but but that's that's what is included in the fiscal twenty-four proposal. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate that. Um, I had one question for you. Go back to slide sixteen. Just wanted to make sure I'm clear on this. Yep, so this says excluded, non-excluded comma town, excluded town. Does that include, would that include any CPS debt service as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this is, this includes the the debt service that we have on the books right now. So we know before the end of this fiscal year or you know, we're ninety-nine percent sure before the end of this fiscal year, we would be us, we would be issuing um additional debt. Is that my timer that I? So our when we go to certify the tax rate for fiscal twenty-four, we will have additional excluded debt associated with the middle school. Um, but we we do not have that plugged in here. These are known costs right now.
Fair enough, and I was just asking for clarity's sake, I think, just to make it clear in the future, it's not solely that's why.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I do good. Um, can you talk about legal expense for a minute? How we doing on legal? So in in fiscal twenty-three, we are projected to be um fifty to seventy-five thousand under budget. The fiscal twenty-three budget is four twenty-five. I think in fiscal twenty-four, we kept it at four twenty-five as well. Um, and and we're we're running it's four fifty, I think. Four fifty? Is it four fifty? I thought it was supposed to be that. Yeah, I think it's flat. I thought it was four fifty. Yeah. Yeah, four fifty, four fifty both years? Yeah, both years, yep. Yeah, yeah. So we are, we are running under budget now. You will note that's a that four fifty is a significant increase on what we had two or three years ago. Yep. In budget, not expense. Right. And um on the big categories of growth in the in the operating budget, so uh most of it, I assume, is it, or let me ask a question. So the salary reserve you have in a separate line item. When you look at the department subtotals, are the salary, potential salary increases built in there? Are those just, that's just other cost growth? So it depends. For all of our union contracts are settled, so we know what those seven-one salaries are. So those are built into the budgets, but for non-union. And if we ever had any um union that wasn't settled, that would be in the salary reserve. But right now, the contracts are settled. Okay.
Any other, any other questions? Lois, Joe, Brian, Jen? Any questions from the public?
No. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Uh, can you restate your name? I just didn't hear it in the microphone. Thank you. I'm taking notes.
Thank you. Frederick Bryan Parkland. Thank you. Uh, if there's been any analysis um to comparable communities and service levels, where, you know, um, there's five FTEs in the budget. I'm not sure if the uh fully loaded costs are included there and benefits, uh health insurance, vehicles assigned to people, et cetera. And have we um have we done any um comparison to the service level to area communities as a a community as a whole on the town side or department by department?
Yeah. So one of the things I I skipped over um in the one of the um items we had listed for ARPA spending, we would like to do some strategic planning to so that we can look at comparable communities, identify service levels, see where we stand up so that we know whether or not we're there or not. We've added a lot of staff in the last five, six years, a a lot of staff. And it would be nice for us to 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 be able to say, you know, here's what we're trying to to get to, or or we're already there. And then to have a basis to say, you know what, we can't do, we can't do more than that. But that's something we're hoping to start over the summer, across the board, looking at all departments, all services. Up until this part point, I think we've just done more targeted and and not to the level of detail that we should.
So the adding of these five FTEs is based on what?
The um well, service, the the internal service level demand. So what we're hearing from residents, um what our staff are telling us are the needs and um and not necessarily looking outside of the community and saying, you know, we've got X number of people in our fire department that that makes sense based on our population. So it's really, it's really been generated internally within the community.
Okay.
Can I just ask someone else? Do you have a question or not? Can we just switch? Sorry, you know, I'm not ready to ask a question. I'll let you come back up.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Sinclair. Week sixteen eighty-one, Main Street in Concord. A general observation on behalf of our children, the generations to come. I grew up on Simon Willard Road, Simon Willard's farm, across the bridge from Trinity Episcopal Church, then I raised my family in Forty-Eight Lexington Road. I now have an apartment in West Concord with a wonderful landlady who left her children from Peru because they didn't have any money, who came and worked here for three years in order to bring her family, which she's done, and she's struggling now with the taxes. And my question is a very simple one, as I say, on behalf of the generations to come. And that is, what kind of town do we want? Do we want a town with cleaning ladies to give their heart and soul to keep alive the holy flame of the heart or not? And lastly, friends, is this finance committee, would you call it a balanced one? I don't know. How many fiscal conservatives are there? If we don't have a balanced perspective, are we going to get the the balanced result? I'll conclude by saying that it's wonderful to be generous. Concord has a lot. It's been my home for seven years, home and home away from home. We're doing pretty well. Might we pass on some of our excesses to folks, towns like Maynard and so on, if we wish to be so very generous? Lastly, if you really want feedback from the audience, it'd be more encouraging if it was more than just a simple minute, but I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question?
Thank you. I know the governor came out with uh the state's fiscal twenty-four budget today. And if I understand it correctly, um in local aid, nearly ten percent was added in her budget. I could be.
Not for Concord. Yeah.
Throughout the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Overall, a ten percent. Uh, was that contemplated in this? And I know it just came out today, so.
No, no, I I was nodding. I understand your question. So again, we, our budget process starts in the fall. We have to make estimates for our revenues, including state aid, and and we do those. We typically are, you know, we look at our, what we historically receive in increases and typically are just expecting about two and a half percent increase in state aid. The what I saw out of the governor's budget, I think it was about two point eight three percent for Concord. I do know communities around here received a lot more, particularly with communities that have growing um student population. We do, we do not, and so a lot of her aid was directed to um education. But we did about as well as we had expected. So we're we're running just slightly ahead on state aid than what we projected.
Uh, Carmen Reese, fifty-two Devon Street. I'm the town moderator, but I just have a question about um the uh unused appropriation carried forward that you've used to uh the help bridge the gap between the finance committee's uh budget guideline recommendation and the actual budget. Is that, this is not a concept I'm really familiar with from prior years. Uh, i-is that money that would normally go back to the general fund for the next fiscal year and become part of certified free cash?
Yes, and and we actually, each of the, each of the years pandemic forward, we have we have carried forward under, it's it's the same, it's the same provision, Mass. General Law forty-four, thirty-three B, paragraph two. Gail was referring to paragraph one, which is uh but paragraph two allows you within the same fiscal year to to essentially swipe up the free cash and re-appropriate it. But if if it was not re-appropriated, it would fall to free cash.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, any questions on Zoom? I don't see any, so let's go next to Article eleven, Capital Improvement and Debt Plan, which is also, Carrie.
Okay, thank you. While Chris is pulling up the slides, I I just wanted to note, we do have a number of staff members here in the audience and the Zoom audience who are here supporting Gail and myself as we present these articles. So thank you for coming. Um, Article eleven is the Capital Improvement and Debt Plan. This is the motion. Uh, we may have a handout at at town meeting, depending on how complicated this gets. Next slide. Capital spending categories, much like the annual budget process, the town's capital planning process is extensive, beginning late summer and resulting in a draft plan which is available in December. Town separates its capital spending into three categories, tiers one, two, and three. Spending authorization sought for tiers one and two is included in this article. Tier one spending is funding funded through cash outlay. Tier two spending is funded through issuance of debt service. Next slide. A total request for tier one spending is one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, as detailed on this slide, and is in compliance with the town's policy relative to capital outlay. as detailed on this slide, and is in compliance with the town's policy relative to capital outlay expenditure. Next slide. The proposed plan requests five hundred and ten thousand dollars for capital items for divisions under the General Government Cost Center. Thirty-five thousand dollars will be set aside for sustainability initiatives, including community-wide events, energy efficiency projects and improvements, and/or matching funds for a variety of grants. Each year, funding is allocated for the replacement of town technology. This year, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be set aside for the replacement of approximately twenty-five percent of our computers. Next slide. Three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the amount set aside in general government is for building improvements and equipment purchases. Two hundred thousand of this will be directed to the replacement of the external staircase and ADA ramp at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. This project was originally contemplated in twenty twenty-one, but placed on hold as project estimates exceeded the original budget. These additional funds will be allowed, will allow the project to be completed in fiscal twenty-four. And we have an additional fifteen thousand dollars to replace carpet inside Harvey Wheeler Community Center. The remaining hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be used for HVAC and ventilation projects across various town buildings. Next slide. The proposed plan also requests a total of fifty-five thousand dollars for divisions under the Department of Planning and Land Management Cost Center. Ten thousand dollars will be used to repair the Chamberlain Park Bridge. Ten thousand for pond and stream management and ten thousand dollars for replanting of um, wetland areas. The remaining twenty-five thousand dollars will be used to purchase a utility trailer and tractor attachments. Next slide. The plan also includes fifteen thousand dollars to support replacement of public use computers and upgrading other technology at the library. Next slide. We have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for replacement of vehicles and equipment for our Public Safety Cost Center. Thirty thousand dollars will be used by the Police Department to replace radios and a hundred and sixty thousand to replace three marked cruisers. Radios are in continuous use by officers anytime they are outside of a cruiser, on foot patrol, and while directing traffic at detailed locations. Cruisers are used in frontline service for approximately eighty thousand miles. Uh, the Police Department has a total of eleven marked cruisers in its fleet, ten of which are hybrid, one is fully electric. Based upon the annual use, or based upon use, the annual uh, request is either for two or three cruisers. Fiscal twenty-four is a three cruiser year. Next slide. A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the CIP is allocated to the purchase and replacement of fire safety equipment and vehicles. Twenty-five thousand dollars will be used for replacement of equipment that is used for firefighting, extrication, and technical rescue. Thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars will be used for programmed replacement of firefighting turnout gear. The National Fire, uh, National Fire Protection Association standards call for turnout gear to be decommissioned after ten years. Each of our firefighters has uh, two sets, one frontline, one in reserve. And we replace nine sets per year. Next slide. On an annual basis, the town budgets for the replacement of passenger vehicles and trucks, which are used as command vehicles, administrative vehicles, and support service, uh, for support services and towing for dive ice rescue hazardous materials and our all-terrain vehicle trailer. In fiscal twenty-four, the department plans to replace squad nine, which is shown here on the slide. This is a two thousand and ten F three fifty, which houses the department's water and ice rescue equipment. Next slide. Fifteen thousand dollars will be used to support upgrades and maintenance of EMS equipment used for patient care. Fifteen thousand of this will be set aside to um, support and maintain public access defibrillators, of which the department maintains thirty across the community. Next slide. A total of seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is contemplated for public works. Um, two hundred and eighty-five thousand is being proposed for the following items, asset management tools, um, that twenty-five thousand dollars, ninety thousand for pavement, uh, markings, which includes restriping center lines, white lines, crosswalks, stopbars, arrows, parking symbols, um, and also the parade route. We do that each year. Um, seventy-five thousand dollars for roadside safety, which generally includes um, replacement of guardrails. And then twenty-five thousand dollars for culvert and bridge repairs. Uh, we recently did an assessment of a hundred and seventy-one town-owned drainage culverts and twelve bridges. We have put together a ten-year maintenance plan. Um, we expect the cost of that plan to be about sixteen million dollars. Uh, we're proposing twenty-five thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-five um, to, to help us um, hire a consultant to prepare some grant applications to the state. So that sixteen million dollar cost over ten years, we're hoping most of that will come in uh, state grant funds. MS four compliance, um, we have uh, an MS four permit with the, with the federal EPA, we have requirements that we need to fulfill, which include public ed-education and detection of illicit discharges, stormwater system mapping and regulation updates. Uh, fifty thousand dollars to cover the cost of that in fiscal twenty-four. And we're looking for twenty thousand dollars to replace a, a, a well monitoring system at the landfill. Next slide. A total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for vehicle and equipment replacement at public works. We have ninety thousand to replace two twenty-ten light duty hybrid vehi- vehicles and a hundred and ninety thousand to replace two heavy-duty vehicles. One is a two thousand and three, one is a two thousand and nine. They're both F two fifties. Sixty-five thousand dollars will be used to replace a caterpillar skid steer. Eighty thousand dollars to replace the rack body on a heavy-duty service truck. Remaining twenty-five thousand dollars for miscellaneous equipment. Next slide. One of the core principle, or one of the core action areas identified in, in vision Concord is to adopt policies, appropriate zoning and town practices that recognize the value of street and neighborhood trees and natural spaces throughout the town. We have sixty thousand dollars in this plan to advance these efforts, which include uh, planting um, fifty to a hundred public shade trees and completion of a shade tree inventory. Further information on all proposed tier one capital may be found in the budget book, beginning on page forty-three. Next slide. Moving to tier two, these are the debt finance projects. There's a total of four point one million requested, which is in compliance with the town's policy relative to capital debt purchases. Next slide. The first request is two hundred and ten thousand dollars to refurbish a, a twenty-sixteen pumper at the midpoint of its expected service life. The refurbishment includes overhauling the suspension, braking, cooling systems, and other operational systems in the truck. Any drivetrain work that is needed, along with any body maintenance, will happen at this time as well. Uh, refurbishment will allow uh, this vehicle to remain in service. Um, it to essentially double the, the um, expected service life. Next slide. Uh, Concord Public Works provides a variety of essential services to the community. It, its fleet of vehicles and heavy equipment are critical assets to deliver these services. The American Public Works Association provides guidance on replacement of fleet assets based upon asset type and expected equipment life. Um, this information helps us to determine whether it makes sense to, or whether it's time to replace an asset or uh, to do some sort of refurbishment. In this case, this is a two thousand and eight heavy-duty service truck, and it has been determined it's time to replace this vehicle. The replacement will include uh, equipping it with a swap loader, dump bu- dump body plow and spreader, similar to what you're seeing here in the slide. Next slide. Parking lot rehabilitation, we're looking for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to address the significant repair needs at the MBTA commuter parking lot in West Concord. Next slide. Uh, traffic signals and, and signage, Public Works is working on the design improvements to the intersection at Main and Baker that is shown here. Um, this, the improvements will include replacement of the obsolete signals and enhanced safety at this intersection. You can see with the crosswalks and everything, this is a little, kind of a crazy intersection. Second to last slide. Uh, pavement management, I talked about this just a little bit in the um, in the operating budget. So in the fall of twenty twenty-two, CPW's engineering department hired StanTech Engineering to review the town's roadway network data and provide recommendations on maintenance. StanTech completed their work resurifying twelve percent, a twelve percent sample, and um, analyzing pavement condition index or PCI. And they determined that the PCI in Concord is sixty-eight. And they determined, further determined that in order to maintain a PCI of sixty-eight, we needed to fund maintenance at about two million dollars per year. Uh, we have a hundred and eight miles of roadway. Uh, we would like to improve the PCI to at least seventy. It wasn't that long ago that it was probably above seventy-five. Um, so we are proposing two point six five million in fiscal twenty-four and um, have a commitment to, to try to allocate additional funds as, as we go forward. And then the final slide is, is just the motion again. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Carrie. First question?
Yeah. So um, in the, in the capital plan, can you compare this to last year? So is this an unusual year? Can you talk about if it's more money than we normally spend? And if it's what we're going to be spending going forward? Yeah. So for tier one, uh, a million, seven twenty-five uh, equates to a million, five oh nine in the current year. Before the pandemic in tier one, we spent uh, just under two million dollars. We'd like to get back to two million dollars. At that level, it allows us to, to make sure that we are truly funding anything up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in tier one and paying cash and um, and then only the bigger ticket items in debt. Um, so for tier two, four point one million, we're, we're right around there, four point one, four point five. Um, and you know, depending on how much money we want to put to pavement management, um, we, we can get away with that, but we have to look at how we're going to fund the, the public works infrastructure.
So would you say that we've been underinvesting, investing in tier one the past couple of years?
We have, and, and, and as a result, we funded um, some of the heavy, public works, heavy equipment that we typically would in tier one and tier two. In that same time span, the cost of that equipment has really, or those vehicles has really, really gone up too. Um, but we, we like to, all of the vehicles we like to fund in tier one, except for the fire trucks.
And similar to the, in the operating budget, right? So this year is a bit unusual, right? We do have ARPA money that we're using. And we also, I think, had tight budgets in the couple prior years related to COVID. So I think, I mean, I think in one of the questions I asked you during a FinCon meeting was whether, as we go forward, we would see the same rate of growth. And I think the answer was no.
Well, that's why we'd like to do the strategic planning to, to have a basis, on a frankly, a basis to say, no, we, we don't have the ability to, to meet the service level demand. Or, or if, if this is important, here's what it's going to cost. Right now, it's, it's hard for us to do anything other than to respond to the demand.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Carrie, just one question, kind of following along with um, the previous question. In your borrowed funds, we have four point one million. And I would like you to, to just kind of give us your assessment in terms of infra- infrastructure improvements that are required. What should be, not what will be, but what should be the annual amount of um, debt in the borrowed funds category?
Based on need or financial policy?
Based on need.
Based on need.
Per se, the next five years.
Uh, we could, we could spend ten million dollars a year on, you know, just really just for, for public works. When you take into account pavement, drainage work, signalization, um, complete streets, pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, sure, we could spend ten million dollars a year.
Thank you.
Carrie, question. Um, in the split between tier one and tier two, right now, it's about thirty percent where we're paying cash and about seventy percent where we're borrowing. Um, do you foresee over the next few years, a shifting more for directly for cash, so we save on debt service, or is this ratio about right? I, I know there's been conversations around.
I think Bob, I think Bob LaLechery must have planted that question.
He, he did not, but we'll ask the question anyway.
You know, so right now, right now, the decision is based on the policy, and the policy says tier, tier one caps out at two fifty.
No.
And so we build our plan based on the policy. So we could have a, a policy discussion about whether that two fifty should be three fifty or five hundred. But I think absent a discussion and guidance to do something different, we would be, we would be capping that at two fifty or right around two fifty.
And, and when was it, when was the two fifty established? Has it been? So has it been tied to inflation at all, or?
I don't know. Not Harris.
No, that's okay. We can, we can get to that later. That's okay.
I mean, it's, it's probably been two fifty for a long.
This is. Uh, are you talking about the percentage that we ha- uh, apply to capital?
Well, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar policy that says anything above that is considered tier two and therefore should be borrowed.
Well, I, I think what we, what we're trying to do is to make sure that um, we maintain. Uh, well, there's two things. One is a policy of eight percent of uh, operating funds goes to capital. And then the other thing is that um, two point five percent of that eight percent goes to um, capital outlay, and the rest goes to borrowing. I think we can adjust the criteria that we use for um, capital. Um, this is a standard criteria that we use for many other towns, um, but that's open to negotiation.
But I, I think the two fifty though, John, we probably, it, it's been two fifty for a long time, ten years, probably, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Do we get, um, what happens when we replace a vehicle? Do we get a trade-in credit for the retired vehicle?
We do.
And is that factored into these?
It, it is. It, it is. We're not, we're not seeing a lot for trade-ins. I mean, when you look at the years of, of what we're trading in, uh, but, but it is factored in.
Would you like a truck, Eric?
Uh, we were two thousand and three F two fifty.
Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Is there a public comment here? Uh, I guess we didn't. Matt, go ahead.
So, Matt Johnson, twenty-one Withered Street, member of the SLU court. And even though I'm moving the article, I hope that I'm allowed to ask a question. Uh, so I was curious about the MBTA parking lot uh, work and whether the MBTA has any responsibility in that project.
Yeah. Um, I don't know. I know um, Marcia's here in the room. Justin Richardson is, is online. Marcia, you want to defer to Justin? Oh, Alan Cathcart is, is online too. So I'm wondering if either Alan or Justin would be willing to take that. Justin's our assistant town engineer. Popped up on the screen.
Hi, uh, Justin Richardson, Assistant Town Engineer. Um, currently, uh, we, as the town, have an agreement um, with um, for joint use of that parking lot. Um, and we're basically, through that agreement, responsible for the maintenance of it.
The joint use, but exclusive cost?
Um, to my, to my understanding, yes.
How about the rev, uh, and all the revenue that's collected is ours too?
I can't speak to the revenue on that.
Marcia.
Good evening. Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. Uh, the agreement was put in place back in the early nineties. Uh, has not been revisited since that time. This split is, I believe, sixty, forty. The MBTA receives sixty percent. The town receives forty percent of any of the proceeds collected on the uh, state land. Uh, the town receives all revenue from its land, so that uh, property is split. Um, the state funded the entire renovation or installation of that parking lot to begin with, back in the late nineteen eighties. The town has not invested any resources in maintaining that lot since that time, so. It has failed um in a number of locations and uh the town is now taking responsibility for making those repairs.
Thank you.
Mark Howell, six sixty, and there's National Road. This is. Feels like it might be more of the road program, but you, I noticed that you have pavement condition index up there. I believe the target for the pavement condition index is eighty-five. Where we're, and I was wondering, and this, these may be Alan's questions. Um when was the last time we were actually at eighty-five? And what, if, is it possible to quantify the? The deficit that we're at, because I noticed on, I think it was your second to last chart. We're on that very sort of precipitous downward slope. When we're at sixty-eight, where it's going to be awfully hard to catch up if we don't see those.
Yeah.
Road improvements over the next couple of years and sort of the last. In this cluster of questions is. Uh how much of the ARPA funding is going directly towards trying to address the deficit in road maintenance?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Alan, Alan Cathcart or Justin Richardson on the first question. For the first few questions.
Um yeah, this is Alan Cathcart, Director, Concord Public Works. As far as the specific numbers, I'll defer to Justin if you need those, but. The concept mark, I think, is what we found, and I think it's a result of a significant investment. And effort on the Cambridge Turnpike. I think for multiple years, that initiative and project absorbed a lot of the roads, you know, program funding. And as you mentioned on that um curve with the PCIs. The challenge is, uh what happens? If you don't maintain roads and maintain the PCI up at the eighty eighty-five level, you start losing. Uh a poor quality road deteriorate quicker. And in fact, all the deterioration happens in accelerated rate, so that's where the intent is to maintain versus replace or. Um reclaim. So we've been uh working with a lot of preservation techniques and piloted that this year. Um so we are. You know, in essence, looking to invest more heavily. Uh we have, you know, I think a. A value of somewhere, uh the question is really a five-year plan, I'm just looking here. For pavement alone, about twenty million dollars of deficit in order to catch up. Um once we do catch up. Uh we we should be able to um reduce the level of investment uh just for maintenance and the quality of the roads across the town should be a superior. Um, Justin, if you want to add anything to that, um you know, please do so.
Yeah, so um our consultants, uh Stan Tech, um. Through a report um and an analysis, basically determined that. Um the town currently has a, like an outstanding backlog right now of twenty-one million. And that would be to bring the PCI up to a hundred percent. Um so that's, that's kind of where we're, we're at right now and. And I cannot speak to when the town's PCI was, was at eighty-five percent.
I certainly know maybe in fiscal seventeen, fiscal eighteen, we talked about it being at. At around that level again before the Cambridge Turnpike. Project, I I'm not sure I ever saw any hard data that said we were at eighty eighty-five, but we we certainly. Referenced it at being about eighty-five. I know Mark also asked about any potential ARPA funding directed to. Um to to roads. In fiscal twenty-four, we have, I believe, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was earmarked to a transportation study, improvement study, so not, not necessarily pavement, addressing pavement condition, but um. Multimodal transportation and transportation improvements with the hope of being able to identify. And T up projects for grant funding. Um in fiscal twenty-four, there is not any, there's no direction of ARPA funding for. Uh road maintenance. Uh one of the, or the largest item in fiscal twenty-four, though, is a half million dollars for the middle school solar. And for anybody who was at the meeting last night and um and heard about that project. The, the impact or reduction in cost to the average household on a monthly basis. Factoring in this half million dollars is really negligible. I think it's about six cents per month. And so I I don't think this half a million dollars is a, is a good way, is a good investment to save. Six cents, I think people might like to see it elsewhere, so that's potentially. Some funding we might look at for um for road maintenance or or another infrastructure project.
Okay, so just to sort of answer my own question, John Harris just handed me this. Page one seventy-five of the budget book indicates that between the years of two thousand and nine. And two thousand and sixteen, the pavement condition index very. Hardly at all, it was either eighty eighty-one or eighty-two in all of those years. Um since then, it's fallen off from seventy-eight, seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-two, and sixty-seven, so. Over the last five years, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Dan, did you have a question?
Good morning, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. Carrie, thank you for everything you you do. Um my, I, my question is that in terms of affordable housing, uh you express an interest in and supporting affordable housing and yet. Uh the the sewer system. Uh in town often precludes the ability to expand affordable housing and support that housing. Uh that that we, that we wish to place in appropriate. Uh spots. I didn't see anything in the budget and I just received this, so I. Negligent in in not having, having read that yet, but uh what are your projections about? And I know Alan Cathcart knows a lot about this, but what are your projections about? Um improving the sewage system, expanding its, its productivity in town?
Yeah.
Um and where is that in your considerations?
So I don't want to steal Alan's thunder. I know he likes to talk about this.
So I'm wondering, should we reserve that for the hearing that's coming up on water and sewage?
From what I can see, I did look at that pretty carefully. There's no, there's no commentary about money being spent on sewers. That has to do with the overhaul of the system and the expansion of the system. Um and that's, that's a much bigger budget item, so that's the reason. If you wish me to hold it until then, I shall.
Oh, until the public.
I I could provide maybe a a quick response that that would be. Helpful. So the, the issue is our permitted capacity. It's, it's not our interest to to expand or necessarily even our. Financial ability to expand, it's the permitted capacity and that's being. Held up by the federal government, so we have reached out to the governor. At the end of January to look for assistance and we have. A second letter that will be going out to DHCD within the next week or so, looking for some assistance in. Being able to get additional permitted capacity so that we're able to expand development, including affordable housing.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Don't see them. All right, thank you very much, very appreciate it. Um Gail, you're up next with Article twelve, OPEB Trust Fund Appropriation.
Thank you very much, Gail Dadd, Chief Financial Officer, and I'll try to stay up here for my next three as opposed to trying to sit down in between. Oh, thank you very much, Chris. This article. Seeks town meeting appropriation of the annual contribution to the town's other post-employment benefits trust fund for fiscal twenty-four. Next. Slide. As has been stated in previous public hearings, and some of this might be repetitive, but I know some of the the folks changed, so I just wanted to give a little bit. Of background. The town of Concord was one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to establish an OPEB, OPEB trust fund. In two thousand and eight, the state legislature adopted a special act granting. The town special permission to establish the fund prior to there being specific authorization to do so. Later, the legislature. Enacted a new law allowing all communities to establish OPEB trust funds. At the two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting, upon the recommendation of the town auditor and town council. The town of Concord reauthorized its trust fund under the new Mass General Law. Each year since two thousand and nineteen, the town has made a contribution to the trust fund in accordance with the OPEB funding schedule. Next slide. Well, next slide, sorry, I wasn't quick enough with my slides. The town's OPEB liability is valued each year as of June thirtieth. As of the most recent valuation, the total liability was fifty-one point one million, of which fifty-four point two percent was funded. The funding plan assumes a six point seven, set seven five percent discount rate. And fully funds the liability as of fiscal year thirty. As a result of the town's strong funding position, beginning in FY twenty-two, the remaining unfunded liability. Has been amortized using level payments. Which is beneficial to us when we do the annual planning of the budget because we know what the funding level will be. Next slide, please. While each of the town's major fund shares a portion of the unfunded liability, since inception, only the general fund share of the annual OPEB contribution. Has been appropriated by town meeting. Guidance provided to the town by the Department of Revenue and the auditor is that the. Total annual contribution should be appropriated in a standalone warrant article, which is what this article is doing. Next slide, please. The total. Appropriation of one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one is being. Requested to be appropriated across all of the major fund as shown on this slide. Once again, the amounts shown are based upon a level payment plan prepared. Using the results of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two OPEB valuation. Next slide. And that's just to move the motion. So again, the total funding. Has remained constant and it is based upon the unfunded liability of each of. The major funds.
Thank you, Gail. Questions from the finance committee? None here. Uh Brian Lois Chellum. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, hearing none, let's go to the next article. Gail, you're. Up for Article thirteen, OPEB Trust Fund Expense.
Great, thank you very much. I will. Have Chris to pull up. These slides. This article seeks town meeting appropriation of the annual expenses. Of the town's OPEB trust fund for fiscal twenty-four. Next slide, please. Similarly to what we just discussed, the Mass Department. Of Revenue and the Towns Auditors have recommended that the OPEB trust, OPEB trust fund expenses be both appropriated. And appropriated in a standalone article, which is what this one is doing. Eligible expenses include actuarial valuation, investment management fees, and trustee compensation. In past years, some but not all OPEB expenses have been appropriated, specifically investment management fees. Had not been appropriate, but instead have been netted from earnings and that is an item we have been changing over the past couple of years to appropriate the full amount. For FY twenty-four. We are requesting an appropriation up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars of which will be used for the actuarial services. And up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be used for investment and banking fees. No budget appropriation as has been done in prior years is being sought for trustee compensation. The majority of the budget will be used to fund the services. Of an investment advisor and to pay investment fund fees. Mass General Law specifically requires that town meeting authorize. The trustee to hire an investment advisor. And there are several benefits of doing this. It helps us to identify short-term and long-term investment objectives. Recommend recommendations of individual security selections, development of custom benchmarking and monitoring performance. As well as ensuring compliance with the investment policy statement. Next slide. So one of the items that. Had been just. Discussed last year was that we were going to be going through a process, an RFP process, to hire. Um an investment. Advisor and we did complete that process in the fall and we have hired fiducian and we are currently in the process of working through them. To onboard them, they're going through all of our documentations and will be coming back with any suggestions or recommendations, so that is why the item that has been. Completed since last year.
Um Gail, what's the size of the um of the fund?
Just go back to where I was on the. I just had that in my prior presentation and I should have known that. It is fifty-one point. Um, oh, that's the liability of fifty-one point one million. Twenty-seven point seven.
Yeah, I thought it was around thirty million or so.
Twenty-seven point seven due to. The market.
And what's the name of the firm?
Fiducian.
Fiducian. I don't know. You heard it, I know. Okay.
And we did go through an. RFP process and received the responses and met with. The top finalists and had them come in for interviews.
You know. So if I understand it correctly, this is the first time we're actually using an advisor and in the past, we were just deducting the expenses from. Earnings, huh?
So we have utilized um in the past, sorry, I just was. Um. But we are, they historically had been reduced from the performance, but we have been moving towards making sure that they're. Expenses of. The funds. I may not be saying that correctly.
So so i- in essence, whatever dividends, et cetera, that the funds may have been. Received instead of reinvesting. The expense, this amount, you were. Paying them off for expenses? I'm I'm a little confused, I guess. Is that in essence what was happening?
I'm gonna fall on a friend. Like I was trying to go back through my notes.
Yeah.
So. So in the, in the past, the ex, the investment expenses were just netted from.
Yeah.
Earnings and that is not a best practice for municipality, so. Right.
And and the amount that was expense deducted from the earnings is going to be roughly the same or going to be, this is going to be less?
Yes, I, I would assume it's probably about the same.
About the same, okay, but the investments will get reinvested basically, okay. Don?
Yeah, so to, so I'm clear, is this another layer of management? In other words, there's an asset manager that Fiducian is then overseeing, or are they act, act? The active manager of the funds?
They are overseeing.
They were, so it is another layer. So we're paying the fees we were paying before plus the fiducian fees?
Yes, yes.
We didn't have anybody before, we managed it internally.
Sounds like we have an active, you have active managers managing the funds.
Right.
Now we've.
And now we've added.
Proceeding as managers, so it's another layer.
I don't know. Well, wait a minute, I thought you just said that before we were paying folks off of the earnings. You're doing it too. No, but I'm assuming that you stopped doing that and now you're appropriating money for that. That's, is that not what's happening?
Right, so before. We now have an independent advisor.
I get that.
Yes, so before we did not.
Right, but now that we have an independent advisor, to Don's point, the money that had been deducted. From earnings or advice that wasn't necessarily independent. That money will no longer be deducted, is that correct?
No, we have, we'll have two. The independent advisor. We're, we're paying all of the fees directly out of our, the town's fund. Versus. V- versus being netted out of the investment account. Independent advisor, uh we're, we're paying. Directly out of the town.
So it will no longer be netted out.
Nothing, nothing will be netted.
Okay, there you go.
Our auditors don't like the netting.
I think they're two different questions, so that's an administrative question, but before, when, before you had the advisor, were you investing in funds or what were you investing in?
Yes, funds.
Okay, so you're paying a management fee at the fund level, but now we have someone looking at it overall.
Correct.
And it looks like we're paying about ninety basis points on that, somewhere around there. It's reasonably high for institutional one.
For, for all fees.
All fees, so the. No, I'm looking at the two fifty, a two fifty on twenty-seven million.
That's a, that's an estimate, the fiduciary fee, I think, Chris, if I, I.
Oh, that's everything?
Yes, that's included within that. I broke out the fiducian fees separately because that's a new item this year, that's.
So the two fifty is not going to the independent advisor, the two fifty is totally your expenses for managing the money, I guess. Thank you.
I'm still confused and we'll just take it offline because I don't want to hold up the rest of the hearing. Okay. Any other, quite any other questions? Questions on Zoom? Lois, Brian, John? Nope. Okay, let's move on. Thank you very much, Gail, and we're going to wrap up Gail's section, at least of this part of the evening, with Article fourteen, appropriation of opioid settlement funds received from the state settlement fund.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Chris to pull that one up. So I am going to walk through this and I am going to preface it that this is much more of an accounting clarification item to walk through this. So, Chris, if you can go to the next slide, please. The purpose of this article is to add is to ask the town to vote to appropriate a sum of seventy seven thousand three hundred and sixty two dollars and eighty eight cents. I probably could have rounded that for the purpose of funding substance use disorder prevention, harm reduction, um, treatment and recovery programs. And all of this is further detailed in the Mass State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlement. This is to be spent under the direction of the town manager with input from local state holders and we are working very closely with the Board of Health on this. This article is asking that it be appropriated from free cash. And what this is doing is um, because the, the way that this has worked out of the settlement fund, it became a timing issue such that these funds were received within the current fiscal year. So they were received within fiscal twenty three, I mean, Carrie, and forget what year, I mean fiscal twenty three. Such, but it happened after the budget process occurred. So one of the ways in order to be able to utilize and spend the funds within the current year is to go through the certification of free cash. Chris, can you advance the slide? And just to give a little bit of background, this has been an item that has been being worked on through the Select Board and the Town Manager's Office and myself. They voted to authorize the town manager to sign on to a statewide opiate settlement between the Mass Attorney General and non-bank opioid industry participants. So we signed on to be part of a settlement. We were notified in August of twenty two that the funds had been distributed into the to the town in the amount of the seventy seven thousand dollars. So that's where the timing issue came up. Chris, can you advance to the next slide? When this came out, the state did not allow municipalities to set up special revenue funds, which would have allowed us to put it into a special revenue fund automatically and appropriate from it. That mechanism did not exist. So in order for us to utilize the money within the current year, they have allowed for us to have our free cash certified, reopen the certification, include this money and then appropriate it so that we can spend it within the year in which it was received. Next slide, please. And I will, this was a little bit, we had fun working through this to get the wording for the article. So this walks through that be, basically the DOR has allowed as long as you've received the funds before March thirty first, that we're allowed to utilize the free cash process and then we will be able to spend them prior to June thirtieth. And that's why we're asking for this warrant article to move forward. Next slide, please. I do want to point out that this is, there are seven permissible uses as outlined by the state and this is what we are working very closely with the Board of Health on ensuring that we have a spending plan based upon these seven permissible uses. And again, this is really focused on allowing us to appropriate the funds within the current year to be able to spend them. And we'll be able to provide additional information as the plans are worked out as to specifically how the, the spending will occur. To, as one point of clarification, as Carrie was pointing out in the budget, there is a twenty nine thousand dollar item that's included in that. We called that out specifically because that is the amount we're anticipating for next year. So we're already including it in the revenue and expenses for next year, such that we don't have to go through this process again, in fiscal twenty four, because we'll have accounted for the revenue within our projections as well as the expenses, since now we have scheduled payment plans related to this.
So it's the twenty nine thousand, they only carry forward, you're gonna use the rest of it in FY twenty three?
So the twenty nine thousand is what we anticipate to receive in fiscal twenty four. So they're two separate. This, this amount this year has already physically been received, but in order to allow us to spend it, we are going through this process next year.
Okay.
It's covered in the regular budget process.
So the, the seventy seven thousand, whatever, it gets restricted, right? So it's restricted to those uses?
Yes.
So do you, are you gonna use the seventy seven thousand?
That is our current plan. We're working very.
Oh, thank you very much. I knew I had a phone friend in the audience.
Hi, I'm Jill Loughlin with the Board of Health. Um, we've been convening a pretty broad group of town programs, police, um, fire, schools, council on aging, Emerson Hospital, Public Works, um, to really talk about the ways that, library, thank you, uh, to talk about the different ways that we can address mental health, not just for residents, for staff as well, in order to use these funds appropriately. So um, we're hopeful that we have a big plan in place very soon.
Other questions? Members of the public, those on the internet, on Zoom. All right, thank you very much, Gail. Appreciate it. And next we go to Rick Loughlin, Article twenty five, appropriation for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, members of the Finance Committee and general public. Uh, my name's Rick Loughlin, eighty-three Chestnut Street, member of the Executive Committee and Chair of the Finance Committee. Uh, there are several members of our group in the audience, I think we should probably introduce them. We have our Chair, Member of the Select Board, Henry Dane, David Wood, from the Education, Concord Museum, Fred Ryan, Public Safety, um, Gary Clayton, Herman Memorial, Diane Proctor, Communication and Publications, and I see Joe Blumbo in the back, Events, and Phil Swain is my Vice Chair on the Finance Committee. And how could I forget Di Clymer, Arts and Literature? So that's a great attendance for our group. Uh, I won't read the article, but we're looking for six hundred thousand dollars to begin the, the funding for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. I would, it's not, it's not a slide on this, but I'd like to read it because I think it's Henry put it in the annual report for the town. I think it's, it's kind of our mantra, so I would, I would like to read it. "The people of Concord, either by choice or birth, have received this historic gift as an awesome and sacred responsibility, together with the obligation to preserve and transmit it to future generations. The celebration of the seventeen seventy five anniversary is our opportunity to show the world once again that the place in which we live has special meaning because of what occurred on our soil and to express undying love for our country, which has given us and the world so much." I think that says it all. Next slide. Uh, two or three weeks ago, the Executive Committee finally approved our logo and the tagline. Uh, I think they came out very, very well and Diane and her group and the Communications Group did an excellent job. The, the slide, the logo and the the tagline were developed by Priscilla Sturgis, who's a Concord resident and a respected graphic designer. Uh, in coordination with the Communication Subcommittee and her services and expertise were donated. And before I leave that slide, since we use two fifty a lot, I thought I had to look up what is the actual verbal meaning of two fifty in the dictionary. Bicentennial rolls off our tongue. Does anyone have idea what two fifty is? Let's try semi-quintennium. It's the semi-quintennium, probably the last time you'll hear it. I think we'll stick with Concord two fifty.
You couldn't put that on the slide?
No, I couldn't spell it. Uh, the objectives, next slide. The objectives and purpose of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. In February of two thousand twenty one, the Select Board created the Concord Two Fifty Executive Committee. Purpose was to oversee the anniversary of the Battle of Concord, coordinate activities with surrounding towns, Minuteman National Park and Hanscom Air Force Base, develop a comprehensive plan to promote the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, identify funding needs, appoint subcommittees, ensure a commitment of diversity and inclusion, and hold public hearings. I thought we go back a little in time. I was able to go through the older reports, X slides, and took some pictures from nineteen seventy five. There's President Ford delivering his address at the Old North Bridge. Who was left is John Finnegan, the Chair of the Bicentennial Commission at that time. To the right is the Concord Minutemen parading through Concord. They were over two hundred and fifty strong at that point and they're in the process of trying to rebuild that unit. Next slide. The left slide is the center of Concord during the parade. It was a bit crowded. Uh, we, we anticipated, at least from all reports, that were over a hundred and twenty thousand people in different parts of the town during that celebration. And the final slide is the Concord Carlisle High School Band marching over the Old North Bridge, flanked by the Concord Minutemen. And a little aside, I believe that the high school band has not been marching recently because they didn't have drums, but we're gonna take care of that. We figured out how to get them some drums and get them back in the parade. Next slide. The nineteen seventy five, two hundred and the anniversary, these were some of the events with a grand celebration attended by President Ford, Governor DeCarkus, US Senators and Representatives. Events included, there was a gala ball at Emerson Playground with over forty five hundred attendees. Sixth Division Parade with units not only from Massachusetts but from all over the country. There were just about six thousand parade participants. Athletic events such as track and field and baseball were held at Emerson Playground. There were also several other events held in town, the different schools, um, throughout the community. As an aside, I had the great privilege in nineteen seventy five to be the First Division Marshal in Parade. So it was, it was a great honor and yes, I was around in nineteen seventy five. There were not tons of us around. Mr. Dane was and I was and probably a few, anyone else around in nineteen seventy five at the parade? Quite a few, that's the climbers. Concord Executive Committee has, next slide. Concord Executive Committee has held twenty five meetings to date since the May of two thousand twenty two, consists of twelve members. chaired by Select Board Member Henry Dane. We have ten subcommittees with over eighty individuals and they're listed there. I won't read them. Uh, we have art, at large members have attended many of our meetings, Director of the Minuteman National Park and Massachusetts National Guard. We had a planning session with all subcommittees last October at the Concord Museum. And in November, we held an open forum with ninety five attendees in person and on Zoom at the Goodwin Forum at the Concord Library. We've established a budget process and filed for nonprofit cooperation with the State of Massachusetts. Now, the biggie, the money. Next, oh, it is up there, okay. Just, I, I think to get into this section, I have to emphasize that these are very preliminary budgets. It's been an extensive, uh, review by subcommittees to come up with plans, programs, et cetera. So we're looking for six hundred thousand dollars this year, some of which are listed below. Next year, fiscal twenty five, we're probably gonna be looking for about nine hundred and eighty thousand on preliminary budgets. And the cleanup year in fiscal two thousand twenty six, uh, about three hundred, three hundred and seventy thousand. So that's the three-year program. Uh, based on what we've seen so far, that could certainly be a moving target. We would hope to keep it in that level of under two million dollars. The preliminary budget for the fiscal twenty four, uh, communication, uh, some of the, these are some of the items that they're gonna need and what we need the six hundred thousand for. We need a professional manager to manage our media campaign. We're in the process of hiring that individual. Uh, publications, media kits, social media, et cetera, are gonna be a key piece for the next fiscal year. Events, deposits for parade units, honorariums, et cetera, are gonna be needed to uh, start sending out invitations to parade, to parade participants. Arts and literature, uh, guys have done a great job in that particular group. We have eleven organizations in her group. Uh, and in nineteen seventy five, I think there were four or five. It shows you how the town has grown throughout the years. We now have eleven organizations wanting to be involved in, in this particular event. And they're working hard on support for programs, events, materials, supplies, et cetera. Hospitality and invitations, uh, they're gonna need stationary envelopes, signs, banners, et cetera. Education, uh, material for curriculum pieces for schools and teacher stipends. We have a great program going with, uh, the schools in town and Concord Academy in order to further the education, uh, to the younger people in the schools. Community participation. Uh, their plan is to have many lunches, et cetera. They're gonna need tents, banners, police detail for events, et cetera. And in, in these, in these particular lunches over the next year and a half. Permanent memorial, uh, we're still in the draft stage of that, but we will need some money for preliminary assessment of locations and design. And public safety, uh, pretty much might be utilized a little. It'll be a larger expense along with the permanent memorial in fiscal year twenty five. And final slide, I believe. Uh, other sources of funding, we have certainly do not want to rely completely on the town of Concord. Uh, tax rate, et cetera, fundraising of individuals and businesses. We've established a discussion group in the past few weeks and they will be getting together again shortly to figure out, uh, what we will be doing as far as fundraising. We have kind of concluded that we would need a professional fundraiser and that would cost some money, but to do it appropriately and get get everyone involved, I think someone who's a, an expert in fundraising may be needed. Uh, Representative Cataldo and Senator Barrett have filed a bill to aid in the public safety for events and it's in conjunction with Lexington, so whatever money is, uh, given will be split with Lexington for public safety. And as I said earlier, public safety and the permanent memorial are two larger expenses in fiscal year twenty five. So it'd be great if we do come up with money from the state. Uh, Rev two fifty is the Mass Historical Society, uh, group that has some money and uh, coordinating, we're coordinating with Mike Lawson, former Select Board Member, who was on the Mass Historical Society. And we're, I've had discussions with him and hoping we'll get some funding there. Obviously, there are other small items, coins, which they did in nineteen seventy five, and other mementos we can certainly do for, for sale. So, I think in the last slide is the, the warrant article. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Um, first of all, thank you for showing us the potential sources of other funding and I guess I had two questions. Are any of the other towns gonna pitch in? Number one, and then number two, the State Office of Travel and Tourism, is there, have you approached them? And do they have funding for these kinds of activities? Because it'll benefit the region, I imagine.
That's, we've, we've talked about a lot of particular groups in our, in our meetings, travel and tourism. I don't think has come up to, to my knowledge. It's certainly, we can add it to the list. We've, we've also had discussions about, uh, you know, funding from the federal government, that, you know, talking to Lori Trahan, uh, our senators, et cetera. So we're not optimistic. Matter of fact, we can't guarantee any of these funds, but we're certainly trying to turn over every stone possible. Uh, other towns pitching in, obviously Lexington, uh, we've had some conversations over events and, uh, I think Henry has had, uh, some discussion with the Select Board Member over there who's in charge of their parade, their events. So I think, I, I wouldn't count on other communities chipping in. We'll still certainly be involved in the, in elements of the parade, et cetera. But, uh, at this point, I think it's, it's Concord and Lexington on their own. it's Concord and Lexington on their own at this point.
Okay, thank you. Down to you.
I'm wondering, uh, do you, and this may be a question for Gail, uh, but does Concord receive, uh, any tax revenue from, uh, hospitality? Room tax, et cetera.
Well, that, that came up yesterday at our meeting, and certainly with the amount of people that are going to come into the town, there's going to be businesses are going to receive quite a bit of business. It's going to be meals taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. I don't, do we see any of that? It just goes into the state coffers, I would think. We do get any, any of it? Good.
We get room tax and mail tax.
Yeah. I was looking for that in the, in the, in the budget. Is it, is it in the other revenue section, which is about four percent? Okay, thanks.
Other question to Chris. Do you have a question?
Yeah, so, um, a- any thoughts on sort of private-public partnerships? So I guess you said you were going to talk to some of the businesses out there. Is there any, there any groups that are interested in doing this with us?
That's what the whole fundraising piece will be. We, we certainly, uh, depending on, on the businesses, it could be individuals, but mostly businesses could decide to sponsor certain things, certain events, such as, uh, you know, arts and literature, communication, whatever, the events and things that are happening, they could certainly uh, we could, the reason to contact them is to see if we can create some sponsorships.
How, how was it paid for? The, the first one, the, the one back with Gerald Ford, how was that paid for?
How was it paid for? Well, they, they did get some income from the coins. Their budget was they, they were right. They spent around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars back in nineteen seventy-five, and I think most of it was off the tax dollar.
So one other question, the dollars you quoted, those are gross costs, right? And total cost for the entire project. And Lexington's going to have their own costs that are separate from that, or how is that?
Yes, Lexington, whatever they're going to, their parade is, is on their nickel. And the only thing that's shared at this point, as I mentioned, is the Cataldo Barrett Bill, which is for public safety and operations around, mostly probably around the parades, where public safety becomes a huge issue.
A- and aspirationally, wh- what percent do you hope to get from other sources? Twenty percent, fifty percent, eighty percent?
We've thrown around the number two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars possibly.
So about ten or fifteen percent. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a, a quick question. Can you tell us, how did you count, or how, how many people are you anticipating coming to this? And how did you calculate that number?
Well, we know what came in nineteen seventy-five. Obviously, it's fifty years later. Our programs will probably be spread over a couple of weeks, which will not will be hard to visualize. That'll be mostly Concordians. The parade is obviously an event uh, that will attract many people. I've heard numbers thrown out that we could have a million people in town for a parade. I think that's a bit a bit on the high side. I would think it's certainly, and how do you count it? It's very hard to predict who's going to show up. But based on weather, et cetera. But it, it's a sizable historical event that was well-attended fifty years ago. I fully expect it'll be well-attended this time.
And, and a follow-up on that would be public safety. Uh, I don't think our police force is probably capable of handling that size of a crowd. How do they go about it? Or, or what is the expectation that you have for public safety?
Henry wants me to let Fred do that, but Fred, Fred will answer that. But the interesting thing is, in reviewing nineteen seventy-five, there were multiple communities involved in public safety. But Fred, go ahead.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, exactly right. There, there are pre-existing mutual aid agreements uh, where Concord can draw upon resources from throughout, um, Northeastern Massachusetts. So uh, there's that resource. Uh, the National Guard will obviously be uh, a resource that will be tapping into uh, state police, no sec sheriff's office and other, other resources. And we've been in communication with the Police Chief and Fire Chief. Initial discussion, but a lot more detailed planning will follow.
And then from, uh, if there's accidents, is Emerson Hospital on board, or how is that managed?
Well, there'll be a detailed operations plan. Um, it'll be drawn up by, um, multiple agencies. You know, we don't know what the political climate will be at that time. There will be any civil unrest. Uh, so there are a number of elements that will go into the planning to include uh, EMS, the Fire Chief will have a, a detailed plan, not only with Emerson, but, you know, throughout the region, Leahy and other Toronto Centers, et cetera. It's all built into the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick one. The, the bicentennial was a national event. Will, will there be something on the national level for this, or is this a conquered?
This, this is Concord, but remember what happens the following year is the national event. Okay, two thousand twenty-six is, that's why we're talking of the national park, because they're involved in, in R two fifty, but then the birthday of the country is the following year, and they're heavily involved. So that becomes a national event. And this, this is pretty much a Concord Lexington local event, but it will attract people from all over the country. In nineteen seventy-five, we had we had the Concord California Band here. So they will come from far and wide for an event of this nature.
Thanks.
Okay, Terry, did you have a question?
Terry, I'm in eighty-nine, Heesbridge Road. I'm on the Select Board, but speaking, um, as an individual. So I, I have a two-part question. First of all, have you given any thought to any type of, um, user fees for special events?
Yes. We have. But we need to have the programs in place. People, we could create a ticket book for, you know, Concord citizens of local events. Once we have the programs in place, could be at a discount. I have no idea what the cost would be, but we, yes, we have heard that suggestion, and we've certainly contemplated it.
Okay, great. And the second part is, um, have you thought about, um, a system like they use for First Night? Where there's sort of this bracelet, you pay like a nominal fee. I don't know, five dollars or whatever, and you can go to all the First Night events. And what that does is it raises some revenue, but it also gives you um, some predictability, so you know how many people might be showing up.
Well, I think it could do that. Basically, what I said previously, you can do that with local citizens. You can't do it with a parade.
No, not a parade.
A parade is people from coming from many directions. But yes, you could create some kind of, whether it's a bracelet or whatever, but you could create something where the local people that attend the programs and events could certainly utilize.
Well, all the people who are coming, even if they come from far away, they could buy it online or whatever, and it would give you some revenue and some predictability. Yeah, I agree. The parade would have
That's, that's
But I'm talking about like a, another big event that you might have.
Okay, well, certainly something we can look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate it.
We appreciate your support.
Yep, thank you and the committee for all the effort for pulling this together. Oh, Dan?
I'm very briefly Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. Freedom's Way is an extraordinary, um, organization, and you are, are unfamiliar with it, go to their website and you'll see. They coordinate, um, uh, uh, of, of all sorts of communities in this area, and we're working closely with them. They also do funding. So that's one of the areas. You ask about the tourism. Uh, what, the only service they provide, but it's an important service, is to spread the word and communicate among each other the kinds of activities that are going on. We're very active in that, thanks to Beth Williams and her good work. And so all of that is, is taking place. Uh, my understanding from talking with people on a federal level is that the organizations that really support this kind of effort are, are reside in the state. And so it's really state resources and money to which we should be looking.
Yep, thank you. Dan, I think you're up next. Oh, yes, you are. Article twenty-six. Community Preservation Committee Appropriation Recommendations.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. It is a privilege to work, um, and, and the CPC is an extraordinary committee. And our alliance with other organizations, uh, like Keith Bergman's uh, Housing Trust Fund and Delia and Marcia and other people, citizens, um, and people who work in our town government are a central part of giving us advice and guiding the work that we do. So the first slide, please. Uh, you can see the division of our, uh, projected money. We have mon- one million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars this year uh, to distribute, and we're distributing every penny of it. Um, you can see that it's divided between historic preservation, community housing, open space recreation, and a small part for administrative costs. Next slide, please. Um, our first project is the Regional Housing Services Program to support the Town of Concord's membership in the Regional Housing Services Program and intermunicipal program, providing professional housing services to develop and monitor Concord's affordable housing programs. Uh, we are recommending thirty-three thousand dollars for that expenditure. The Asperger Bluff Housing Project, as you know, we worked on this last year. Um, we were very, very hard. We continue to support this. Um, the development of five restricted affordable housing units on the recently acquired property of Old Man, Old Amarble Road. The project consists of creating two eligible housing units from the existing apartments and designing the development of three new units on the remaining land area, preparing those and making them ready for affordable housing in the future. For that, five hundred thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question, Diane?
Of course, Chris.
So the, the, the half million dollars is, doesn't build us a home?
It does not.
It just prepares the site?
It does, it does take an existing house
Right.
um, and, and convert it.
So we get two units?
So we get two units right there. So it doesn't pay, um, and that's, that's going to be i- interestingly, a significant expenditure. But then we also have to get the land ready for other housing, you know, units. And so that's where not all of the money, but a lot of that money would go.
So this will be a multi-year uh, project then? So they'll be back for more money?
I suspect they will.
Yeah.
You know, it all depends in many ways on what happens with the Junction Village. You know, you know, and the work there. I mean, I think there's going to be ongoing discussion, Chris, about, you know, money and resources.
Okay. And how do they come up with the amount, Diane?
Uh, they came up with the amount based on, uh, Public Works Services that they're going to need and the actual cost of the rehabilitation of the house. And if they don't spend all five hundred thousand dollars, uh, we will recover it. Speaking of recovered funds for just a moment before we, before we move on to the next slide, uh, one of the things that we've been working very hard on is trying to figure out what resources we have given out in the past that have not been fully expended. We're in the process of developing a very refined look at that. Uh, and two things have emerged. One is that we're going to ask projects to report to us not just once a year, but twice a year going forward. Because right now, the only requirement is that once a year it kind of catches up with what you're doing. So we're going to try to do this on an ad-sir, I'm happier, and then full year report. And as for the details of that, I would like a chance to present those to the income later in the year. So thank you. Next slide, please. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Project, this is probably the end of that funding, as if, for Concord at least. Um, uh, to provide additional amenities to enrich and enhance the user experience on this non-motorized ADA accessible multi-use trails such as safety improvements, the Junction Village, uh, interpretive contemplative, um, improvements at the, at the Concord Prison Cemetery Site adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. For those of you who are familiar with that, that particular cemetery, um, there, there's, there are stories to be told there, and they're not unimportant stories. So, thank you. Next slide. Open Space and Recreation Plan. This is for consultation services to assist in the preparation of an update to the Concord Open Space and Recreation Plan. Uh, we should be doing this every five years, but with COVID and other expenditures, um, we have not updated this for seven years. And it helps provide a roadmap for identifying community needs for open space recreation and makes the town eligible for several state and federal grants. But without this particular update, uh, we are not eligible.
Is that for a consultant? Where does the nine?
It's, it's, yes, it's for a consultant.
Okay, so in total, it's, it's one consultant for the hundred thousand?
That is my understanding. And I think from what I can discern, Chris, that seems to be the going rate. And I don't know what you all did, but I'm obviously in the wrong job. I'm just going to become a consultant. Um, next slide, please. Mourners Pond Restoration Project. This is a, an ongoing project to improve the ecological health and recreational opportunities of Mourners Pond. Uh, this is, we are approving this provisionally right now because the actual discussion about what's going to happen at Mourners Pond, what would happen begin in full until tomorrow night, when there is a public hearing that Delia is going to manage. Um, the, the, the committee anticipates and hopes that Delia will then return and explain to us how that money is going to be used, because there's still questions about it. So that when we present things at the town meeting, we can speak, um, very specifically about how that money is going to be used. Delia offers a cautionary tale, and that while they'll be close to figuring that out, they may not have, you know, every, every little dot and, and dash worked out. But at the present moment, uh, we anticipate that the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be needed. And so that's a placeholder. Um, next, next slide, please. The Cemetery Stonewall Restoration. Spending time in the cemetery and looking at the stone walls convinces anyone uh, that this is an important project to restore thirty-five deteriorating stone walls and structures in Concord's three historic cemeteries. Uh, in the, uh, Old Mill Bearing Ground, South Bearing Ground, and Sleepy Hollow Cemetery uh, for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And there are more of the, of those walls, uh, that need repair. So whether they will come back for more from us, um, I'm not sure. Next slide, please. The Civil War Soldiers Monument Conservation and Preservation Project. To preserve and conserve the Civil War Soldiers Monument and to replace the current tablet adding the name of Private George W. Dugan, fifty-fourth Mass Volunteers. We received the most passionate letters from students who studied, uh, the absence of, of Private Dugan um, on this plaque, encouraging this project to go forward. They were, they were so touching and so gorgeous. It is the thickest file we have with all of the other projects and, and compelling in every regard. A hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Uh, the Concord Historic Preservation Plan to hire a team of historic preservation consultants to create a Concord Historic Preservation Plan. This is probably long overdue um, as we have not had such a plan. And that's fifty thousand dollars.
So that's a consultant as well?
That's a consultant as well. And then Preservation, Conservation and Historic Town Plans to provide for the uh, conservation treatment and digitization of two clans of the Concord Water Works and seven, uh, sheets comprising the town plans of Concord. Uh, we have a wonderful archivist in town now, um, besides Anka, um, Bose at the library, who's doing a tremendously good job of trying to find the, the, the resources that need to be preserved that are in fact falling apart. Uh, he, he demonstrated to us several, um, items that, that will profit by this effort and this work for sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Next slide, please. And then for the CPC Staff and Technical Support. Funding for the staff support, legal, technical, and consulting services on top of of the, the wonderful people who work with us, supplies and associated administrative requirements, including legal ads, copying, funding to purchase CPA signage, and other administrative expenses, forty thousand dollars. This has been a pretty routine, routine cost. Um, e- each year, at least, that I've served on the CPC. I, are there any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, um, letter C, Town of Concord Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. It might be the planning board that has to answer this question. Is this the final request for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, or do you anticipate more?
Here is the Bruce Freeman Rail Tail guide us going forward.
I'm the Assistant Director of Planning Land Management, and I've been the project manager on this uh, since two thousand. So, um, it has gone on for a number of years, and people keep identifying new projects along the way. Uh, so I can't guarantee that it's the last time, but these limited funds will be used to provide some safety improvement enhancements as well as design this little area, uh, for contemplation off of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that is associated with the Concord Prison Site. So there may be other projects in the future. I'm not anticipating any. I won't be here after this year. So there may be somebody else who will come up with some new ideas.
Well, along that line, I'm wondering with the people who request, uh, little odds and ends and things like that, moving
little odds and ends and things like that, moving uh flower buckets from one area to another, I'm wondering if other towns who are also on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail could provide the funding for those?
In their communities, yes.
Can they provide the funding in our community? The trail, it's, you know, it's a portion of the trail, but can other towns participate that way?
That is quite unlikely, but we can always ask.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Um, my other, my other question is on item E, which is Town of Concord Warner's Pond Restoration Project. At the last CPC meeting, I know that this was under discussion. There's a lot of information that we still need to get because we haven't had the um
The survey, and the public hearing tomorrow night, which I hope people will attend.
Right. But I'm wondering, um, there's already seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that has been allocated in prior years. I'm wondering what amount has been spent on of that fund so far and?
I can tell you exactly, actually. And while Delia is coming to the microphone, yes, no, maybe? I will, I will give you the exact amount that has been spent. Go ahead, Diane.
Uh, good evening, Delia K. Natural Resources Director. So, that's correct that we have the um seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars um from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two CPA authorizations. None of that money has been spent.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
None of that money has been spent. There have been prior appropriations for the Warner's Pond's um watershed management plan and the dredging feasibility study. And I would have to get you those numbers. I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head. Uh, the reason for the request for this additional funding, um I think probably everybody is aware that we have been working on this project to improve the ecological health and recreational capacity at Warner's Pond for several years. The watershed management plan identified dredging as the most um feasible, cost-effective, long-term solution to achieving those goals. Um, we put the project out to bid last summer. Uh, bids came back in early September and were three times the cost estimates, the twenty twenty-two cost estimates. So it didn't make sense. Um, I mean, three times, it came in at nine and a half million, we got one bid. So I submitted a CPA application uh the following week without really knowing what next steps were, but knowing that we wanted to get a consultant on board to identify more appropriate uh cost-effective solutions. And so we have two alternatives that are being evaluated. One is for modified dredging. One of the large cost drivers with the, with the bid that came back for our initial dredging project was sediment disposal costs. Um, and so if we maintain the sediment within the ponds, that's one option that we'll look at. And the second is dam removal. Those are two very different options. Well, the dredging is, you know, the modified dredging is not that different, but the dam removal is obviously a much more radical and different approach. And as I had understood it until um just before the meeting, I, I had understood that CPC had approved or recommended approval for town meeting uh for that with a project to be identified, but as Diane mentioned.
It, it's just, it's just a matter of identification of the project so that when we present it, we can do so with a, a greater clarity about it, because people are aware that there's a study going on.
Right.
And so it's public hearing, so.
Right. So it's a public meeting. Uh, we will have a public meeting, uh, two public meetings. The first will be tomorrow night. Uh, I hope everybody received a survey and a meeting announcement.
Do you know, I don't think they, I don't think they did because I asked at our finance committee meeting just the other night who had received it, and only about four of the members had received it, and other people, other citizens had not received it either.
I did not.
So we did mail it out to every resident in town. And we got a bill from the, the post office and from our, our printer that uh, but we are also um advertising through other avenues. It's on our website. It went out in a news and notices blast. We have reached out to churches, synagogues, um.
Just in the interest of Kanye.
I'm sorry.
It's a long year because it's nine twenty and we still have our regular meeting. Other questions?
Um, I do want to say that they, that you have spent eighty, twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars of that money.
Okay, great. Okay, Chris, I have one question. One question. Um, so, um, Diane, we were here on another topic, um, on the schools. We talked about uh their potential application to fund fields.
Yes.
And I don't know if they've actually had any dialogue with CPC yet.
They have had a beginning dialogue, Chris, um, and I think that they're figuring out the process for applications and moving forward on that.
Okay.
Uh, depending upon those, um, on those discussions, they may remove that item from the warrant. That has been my understanding. I can't really speak to them because I, they were in the process when I, the vote had not yet taken place for the, the school. I also just gonna hijack this to just say that this coming Sunday um at three PM at, right in this very space, there is a candidates forum for the people running uh Carl, um, Mark Howell, Carlin Reed, Carrie Rankin, and Carmen Reese. And I would urge everyone to please come and join us. Thank you.
Article twenty-seven, stay up there. Community Preservation Act, rescind and reappropriate funds.
Thank you very much. Uh, can we go on to the next slide, please? To rescind um prior appropriations in the total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund appropriated in the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting at the Junction Village Open Space Project. Uh, the purpose is to transfer that amount to the CPC Open Space Reserve Fund. So it's really a housekeeping item, as, as really in many ways is the second one. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation um Act. Funds have been appropriated for open space and recreation purposes in support of the Junction Village Assisted Living Project in May of twenty twenty-two. Because the project is no longer moving forward, those funds will come back, we presume, to the CPC if it is approved by the town meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Right, sir.
Uh, Gary Clayton, thirty-one, Blackwood Lane. Uh, just referring back to the previous article regarding the proposed projects. I'm curious, Diane, are each of those projects, do they have some form of matching funds? Staff time contributing to the effort under each of those projects?
That's a wonderful question, Gary. In fact, part of the deliberations and considerations that we enter into is the presumption that there will be matching funds of one kind or another. Sometimes is it of twenty-five percent? Um, sometimes it is, is as much as fifty to sixty percent of the grant is being offered. And that's always an important part of what we consider.
Thank you. Next question?
Thank you. That's a great question.
Richley, three forty-seven, Lexington Road. Diane, thanks. If you pull the open space money back, but another project goes forward at that site that wants to incorporate some of the things the community's been working on. How hard is it to get the money back from?
Well, it, it's, it's been put in a reserve fund for open space and recreation. Which so that if in fact, um, they, the, there is a project that goes forward and it's compatible with the work that the, the, the group wanted to do, then it's, it's not hard at all to move that money back and put it into their hands. It would require, again, an application and a discussion. One of the things about that particular project you will probably remember is that the money and its moving forward was premised on the fact that they would be using the, the big heavy equipment that Grantham was going to bring to that site. So it would, it's could be dependent again upon the collaboration with the, with whoever the developers are, that they could use some of that heavy equipment uh in their effort.
But we'd still be dependent on the CPC and town meeting cycle to get the money to be managed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
But that, that turnaround could be rather quick, I think.
Any questions online on Zoom? I do not see any.
All right.
Next, next item.
Next item is Article twenty-eight, Community Preservation Committee Appropriation Recommendation for the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Uh, the Community Preservation Committee, uh, Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. This is the second part of a, of a, an article that was moved by the special town meeting earlier this year. And this is the second part of that. So could we have the next slide, please? At the special town meeting, it says in January twenty twenty-three, a million forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents in CPC funds previously appropriated for the Junction Village Assisted Living Project were appropriated to the CPA uh Community Housing Reserve Fund. This article would reappropriate that precise amount of money now in the CPA Community Housing Reserve Fund to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of assisting with the development of affordable community housing. Next slide, please. Any questions? We have Keith Bergman here if we have questions.
We have questions, Chris.
I, I do. Um, Keith, what will be, um, between this and Article twenty-nine, what will the balance be in the, uh, in the fund once, once the funds come back? Oh, 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 good. Oh, good. Yeah. Sorry, I'll hold.
Any other questions? Any questions online? Lois, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick one. Why wasn't this done in one step at STM? Because we were advised by legal counsel that it had to be a two-step process. Only, only.
Always do with the lawyers say.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We, we did a pretty deep dive later on and discovered, well, actually, we didn't have to go through all of that. But nonetheless, we did, Lois, and by the time, in the process, there was no way to kind of back gracefully out. So, that's where we are. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to Article twenty-nine, Transfer of Housing Funds. Keith?
All right. Uh, Keith Bergman, fifty-six White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, the trust is grateful to the Community Preservation Committee and to the Select Board for inserting Articles uh twenty-eight, twenty-nine onto the warrant, which would collectively transfer some two million forty-four thousand dollars to the trust from prior town meeting appropriations for Christopher Heights at Junction Village. Passage of both articles would bring our fund balance to three million eighty-six thousand dollars, and I can tell you all of that. And more will be needed to help implement Concord's housing production strategies as the town falls below its ten percent goal under the state's Chapter forty B. Next slide. Article. Article. We're, um, do we have a motion? Article, yeah, there we go. Article twenty-nine is the second of two articles transferring funds to the trust which town meeting had created to be able to respond quickly as affordable housing opportunities arise. The trust thanks Concord voters who annually appropriated five hundred thousand dollars since uh twenty nineteen and as recently as January's town meeting have approved filing home rule petitions with the state for dedicated funding sources so that the trust would not have to rely on the property tax in the future. Next slide. Article twenty-nine transfers to the trust one million dollars from Article thirty of the twenty seventeen annual town meeting, which was approved for Christopher Heights at Junction Village. And while that project is no longer going forward, this transfer to the trust would allow those funds to continue to be used for affordable housing purposes, including another project at Junction Village and other projects that are prioritized in the housing production plan. Transfers from both articles would allow the trust to work with its housing partners on implementing our uh housing production plan. And the trust is not requesting a, an appropriation from free cash this year. Next slide. By way of an update on how the trust came about, how the funds have been spent and how they will be, we prepared these supplemental slides for both Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Next. To create and fund a municipal affordable housing trust which can act quickly as opportunities arise, voters had accepted the enabling state statute, approved the town bylaw, filed home rule petitions for real estate transfer fee and building permit surcharge and appropriated funds in the meantime. These two articles would bring our fund balance to three million eighty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, all of which and more will be needed to implement the plan, the uh strategies in the town's housing production plan. Next slide. That plan, just adopted unanimously by the Select Board and Planning Board in December and approved by the state in January, reflects strategies recommended by all of our housing partners. Those include the Concord Housing Development Corporation completing five affordable units on its Aspet River Bluff property and identifying a new affordable housing developer for Junction Village. The Housing Authority uh will explore ways to add affordable units to its existing properties. And in addition to supporting those, the trust will also consider acquiring private land and surplus town properties as opportunities may arise and by negotiating with private entities to create affordable units from market rate ones. The housing production plan predicts Concord will fall below its ten percent goal by between fifteen and sixty-five units once the new twenty twenty U.S. Census figures kick in later this year. Actually, they'll kick in in May. But having an approved housing production plan in place supports the town the opportunity, at least, to try to achieve safe harbor from forty B through producing houses. And the standard for uh one-year waiver is for Concord would be creating thirty-six to thirty-eight units. So there's work to be done. And while the financial piece we're discussing in the plan is part of the solution, the, the housing production plan also recognizes that the market must be tapped to produce affordable housing through zoning and regulatory processes. To coordinate implementation of the plan, the Concord Housing Roundtable will convene with an expanded membership including the Select Board, Planning Board, Community Preservation Committee, and all of our housing entities. This must be a joint effort in order for us to succeed. Next slide. As detailed in the spreadsheet that uh we've also submitted uh for, for the evening, two million thirty-seven thousand has been deposited in the trust. Uh, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars uh has been committed from that for some ten affordable units, leaving a, a current balance of one million forty-two thousand dollars. Next slide. Passing both Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine would increase the uh fund balance to three billion eighty-six thousand dollars. And the trust will be working with its housing partners on how best to program those funds to carry out the housing production plan. Next slide. The trust can act quickly when opportunities arise if funding is available. And we ask for your favorable recommendation on Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Keith. Questions?
I do. Keith, um, how does that money get, or what is the approval process for spending that money? Who, who gets to say we're gonna spend the three million? And on what?
The bylaw authorizes the trust to uh expend the vote of town meeting. Our um guidelines, which are adopted by the Select Board and are our policy and which are in the process of being updated to reflect the housing production plan, essentially requires, and I'll say that it requires us to be a lockstep with the Select Board and with all of the other housing entities. We are not, as I've said to this board before, we're not a rogue uh outfit. Uh, we have the town manager, we have a member of the Select Board. Uh, we have a former Select Board member, the president of the Concord Housing Foundation and my, and, and. and, and me, as are, as the five members on the trust. We are tasked by the housing production plan as being the coordinator to make sure that the housing plan gets implemented. In the, in our first full year of operation, we regularly convene all of the other housing entities to get together to see what their priorities are. And so while we have, while, while the trust has the, will ultimately have the, the entity that we can vote to, to spend the money, unless it also involves the acquisition of land, in which case it would, it would require a Select Board vote. The votes that we take will reflect the housing production plan that the Select Board, Planning Board, and all the other housing entities are, are committed to. And we do that because we know we have to come back to the, the Community Preservation Committee, to the Select Board, to the Finance Committee, the town meeting, for annual approvals, so that the things that we will do will come as no surprise to anyone. Projects that you saw listed there are the one, are the priorities that we're going to undertake. To say my bias is in favor of, of projects where you don't have to pay for the land, and maybe because you already paid for it, or because you got it as surplus like with Junction Village, because the development costs are, including the land costs, are certainly significant in Concord.
Thank you. Other questions?
So you show that the fund would then be up around $3 million. Approximately, how many affordable housing units would that purchase or help to construct?
Well, at the risk of offending, it would have produced 83 units.
It would have.
For, it would have, $3 million would have produced 83 units for Christopher Heights and Junction Village if that had gone forward. We will not see that standard ever again, that, that the $3 million will not, will not go that far. But we have to make it go as far as it can. I, I think easily half of that would be needed to complete the five units that, in addition to the money that's already spent, perhaps half of that would be needed for Aspet River Bluff. The, the, we haven't talked about the priorities of the Concord Housing Development Corporation tonight, but they, they are considering programming or having two tracks pursuing Aspet and Junction Village simultaneously rather than sequentially. I'd say up until a couple, a couple of months ago, it was Aspet first and then Junction Village, that the process that CHDC is going through now, with the issuing of requests for proposals. Next month, we're told, we'll may see an accelerated timeframe for Junction Village. And it will be important for us to be telling the development community that we've got significant funds on the table that have not been taken off the table, that they were right, right now, there were $2 million that were approved by town meeting in the past for Junction Village. The, basically half in the CPC and half from the town. The CPC portion is in Article 28 and being transferred to the trust. We would very much like to see the affordable housing funds that were, that right now our, our town meeting says are for Junction Village.
Yeah, you, you had said, you had, I want to get back to the, to the question. And that is, you, you said something, maybe 83 in the, in the past.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at 3 million, and I'm saying if it costs 300,000 to put up a house, it's going to get 10.
Right.
And anyway, I, I would like to know more about how these plans are developed and approved in terms of the construction.
Can we follow up on that with an email exchange?
Yes, thank you.
We're getting one.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
Yeah, and, and I have to say that the CH, the, the trust, the trust is taking its lead from the, the trust is taking its lead from the property and the CHDC on what they're, and so I think that, I think.
We're going to go on to the next one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But if we could have an email to Gail and then she can distribute it in terms of rough estimate of how much that might be. Rough estimate is I think what we're looking for, okay? If possible. I understand it's hard depending on the project itself, but whatever we might be able to do. Any questions on Zoom from anybody? No. All right. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Gail, you're going to bring us on. Article 43, Annual Appropriation of Parking Meter Receipts.
I get to bring us on with the last four, I think, so I will try to be straight. And I think Chris is going to bring up, thank you, Chris. This article is for the annual appropriation of parking meter receipts. This is to appropriate the sum of up to $400,000 from parking meter receipts to fund expenses related to parking enforcement or public transification initiatives for fiscal '24. Next slide, please. Nope, next slide as well. Thank you. The parking meter fund is authorized under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22(c), which requires an annual appropriation. The amount available for appropriation is up to 100% of the fund balance as of June 30th of the prior fiscal year. As of 6/30/23, we are estimating a total of approximately $400,000 to be available for appropriation. This is a balance that we are continuing to monitor, and if it looks as if that would not be the balance available, we would, we would bring that forth as well. Next slide, please. This slide shows the historical revenue expenses and fund balance for the parking meter fund from FY '16 through the FY '23 projected ending balance. Prior to FY '19, revenue had always met or exceeded expenses. In FY '19, there were some extraordinary one-time expenses charged to the fund. Without those expenses, the revenue would have been sufficient to cover the expenses. In FY '20, the fund broke even, but then in FY '21, as a result of the pandemic, the fund lost approximately $40,000. The spike in revenue in FY '22 is largely the result of the $400,000 of ARPA funding that was approved to be allocated to the fund. We have, we have assumed that the revenue will continue to grow as folks continue to come back out and that there is more activity, but again, we are continuing to watch the balance of the funds. Next slide, please. This slide shows the historical expenditures for categories for the same time period and includes estimated expenditures for FY '23. Historically, the personnel costs of the officers assigned to parking enforcement were charged to this fund. We discontinued that during the years in which the revenue was not there. And as Harry did mention, the cost of the officer does continue to be within the operating budget as we're looking to see how the fund does and how the revenue evolves over time. So we would continue to look if the revenue does continue to grow, that we would look to shift some of those expenses back to the parking meter fund to the extent it could support it. Next slide. So again, this is to, as of this point, to appropriate the estimated ending balance of 400,000 into, to cover the expenses into FY '24.
Thank you. Questions?
So we lose money? We continue to lose money on it? How much are we losing?
I could go back and pull that. I don't have all of the salary figures that would have been charged that were not, so I can get back to you on that, Chris.
Questions on Zoom? All right. There ain't nobody in the room, so we'll go to the next article.
Great.
Which is, again, Gail, Article 44. Authorized Expenditures of Revolving Funds Under Mass General Laws, 44, Chapter 535 E and a Half.
There you go. You just took the whole slide from me. Just go to the next one. Thank you. Oh, next slide. Great, thank you. So as we just mentioned, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half requires the annual spending limits be set by town meeting for certain revolving funds. Revolving funds authorized under other sections of Mass General Law, such as the RECT Revolving Fund, do not require the annual appropriation. This article seeks to establish annual spending limits for five funds, and the next slide shows those five funds. Thank you, Chris. Oh, another I chart. I will work to expand those for, for town meeting. The Regional Housing Services, Road Repair, Senior Services, Tree Preservation, and Visitor Center and Tourism. So those are the same funds as last year, and I do work with each of the individuals responsible for these to review the expenses, and most of them are pretty much in line with what they had been in the prior years. Next slide, please. The revolving fund receipts come in various forms, fees, fines, and/or donation. Spending goes to supplement existing departmental programs and services. Including, on the next slide, we have some examples of what they would cover. Pavement preservation activities, day trips, and other recreational activities for seniors. Services performed through our Regional Housing Services Office, such as consulting on proposed housing projects, reconciliation of the subsidized housing inventory, and other monitoring of existing affordable housing units, and for, and providing tours and programs through the Visitor's Center. So there have been no changes in any of the proposed funds in the current year. Next slide.
Great. Questions? Comments? Concerns? We'll also see you shaking your head. No, Brian and John, I'm assuming they're also not. John's not on. All right. Thank you very much.
And.
Gail, and we're going to go to Article 45.
And I'm not sure if I can do Articles 45 and 46 together. One is for unpaid bills and one is.
I would love it if you can.
Debt precision, so we will do five words or less, and we currently do not anticipate a motion going forward on these two articles.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. So I think unless there are any other questions in general, we'll close the public hearing, and then we will open our Finance Committee meeting. I need yous from the room here, plus Lois and Brian. Do I hear motion to close? I heard a second.
Second.
Eyes.
Eyes.
In favor. Lois and Brian, you guys said yes?
Yes.
No names? Ten to zero, so.
Five minutes to stand up.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Great.
Let's take two minutes, three minutes, and then get back. So what I'd like to do, I'm going to ask, I'm going to go around and ask any member of the, of the, have been.
The sound went off.
Lois, I'll take you.
Okay, is this now, yeah, the sound's back on now for me. Thank you.
Well, it depends on the context, because the other bill, the term, maybe nine hundred thousand.
Hey, Lois, can you hear me? This is Brian.
Yes, Brian, I can hear you.
Hey, good, good to, it's good to hear you. Yeah, I, I just have a quick minutes question because I know that you are, you know, you're sort of overseeing the minutes, and I want to make sure they're sort of, what I've got here is appropriate for what you're expecting. I, I've basically kind of gone, gone through the list, identified which, which articles actually had questions and for public questions and which ones did not, and then took some, you know, took some light notes appropriately. Was there, was there any others, was there a structure specifically that you wanted in this context, in this phase of the meeting?
No, I don't think so. You, you can summarize the presentations. We don't need to go into huge detail about each presentation. The slides are available, the tape is available. You can summarize each presentation and then highlight the questions.
Yeah.
You know, it's each, each article, even the ones that have fairly long conversations, the ones that have, have the longest conversation, longest presentation, like the town budget, you'll want to go into a little bit more detail on that. But a lot of the others, you'll be able to summarize in a paragraph or two at most.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
All right. We have taken the five minutes. We're going to open up the Finance Committee. We have two, four, six, eight, 10 votes, so we have a quorum. And so I am now opening up the Finance Committee Regular Meeting, March 1st, 2023, to discuss all of the articles that we just heard about in the public hearing. Brian, do you mind continuing to be the scribe taker? I'm going to make it really easy for you. I don't know if you and Lois heard, but the first proposal I have is we take all of the articles, put them in one motion, and take a vote. But I'm going to go around and ask each member if they want to pull out a particular article or two and have a separate discussion. So I'm hoping that we can get the vast majority of them done with one vote, and then the others that need to be pulled, we can have discussion. Does that make sense, folks? All right, so let's go through this. Chris, I know you, let me start with Chris, because she had identified a couple. Which ones do you want to clarify, Chris?
Twenty-five and 26.
Twenty-five and 26?
Twenty-five is the 250.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, that's okay. Okay, hold on a second. I'm just going to go around the table. Kathy?
Wait, I was going to say, 45 and, and 46, we should not.
Yeah, no, we're doing it. Do you have any others? I'm coming back around. Lindsay?
Um, seven.
Seven? Okay, any others?
I had 25 and 26 also.
Okay, Suresh?
I had the 25 and 46.
25, 26, Lois and Brian?
I agree, 25 and 26. I think all the rest we could vote on.
Brian? Brian? You're muted.
None on my side, thanks.
Okay, so can I?
Just, and, um, Parashar, um, I question whether we need to hold back on Article seven. But, um, I, I'd be comfortable voting on it tonight, but if someone feels they want to hold it over to the next meeting, that's fine.
We're gonna talk about it, we're gonna talk about it and maybe it's a short discussion, maybe it's not, but let's at least get the others out of the way here.
Okay.
Okay, so can I get a motion to recommend affirmative action? On. I'll read the rest, somebody make motion, I've got these ready.
I'll make a motion that we vote to recommend affirmative action on Articles three. Eight. Nine. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-nine, forty-three and forty-four.
Do I hear a second?
I said.
Second, what happened to Article one? Is that not on our list?
It's not on our list.
It's not on our list, okay.
So I hear multiple seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Brian? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's just do this in numerical order. So Lindsay, Article seven you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, just a real quick question, Perashar, um, I, I know we had multiple seconds, but I, do we, don't we need to identify someone specifically?
I don't think so. Um.
Who said the second?
Oh, do we need to know a second? Okay, there you go.
Okay, uh, identify D is the se- I think we had.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Lindsay?
I guess, you know, it was, I passed the discussion and it just, it, I, it was lingering for me that that just feels that we are, um. We've, it, from the conversation, it sounds like this is the lowest that we've been with, um, in our balance, right, getting down to the five. Two percent, when we're usually, I guess the, the guidance is five to ten percent, right? So, um, is that concerning to anyone else on the committee? I'm just new to this, but it feels like that would should be concerning and it seems like the trend has been to. Take from free cash. Uh, for the last several years and.
Speak to that. I think that, that it's, it's very close. Five percent we need to have. And I think we're all at the point of recognizing that we have to be very cautious going forward. This, this year, we are settled with it. So I feel confident. That we are doing the right thing this year.
For this year.
Yes, but it has to be one year at a time and the kinds of articles that are put in front of us.
Can we put up the slide that actually showed the five point two six percent?
Yeah.
I think it's.
Right.
Yes, because.
Yeah.
I think that was without actually the impact of Article. Twenty-five. But if memory serves me, in which case we might drop below.
Right.
So we should talk.
I thought it was higher.
Yes.
No.
Gale, can you talk a little bit about that? We need to, we need to go into regular, oh, here we go. So walk us through this, so seven point six is where we are today.
That is where we are today.
And it's a six point zero, six percent increase. Or not increase, sorry, that's the.
So it's not at the five percent yet. Right.
Now walk us through the rest of it.
So the rest of it looks at the two articles and again, these are the two articles that specifically requested utilization of free cash. And the warrant, so there were the two of them. The amount to reduce property taxes and the middle school stabilization fund. And that is, if both. Are accepted. That would be the six, three, three, eight. Number and that would be five point oh six percent, that's right.
So roughly, if you do the math, what did Article twenty? Uh, five asked for? Right, so if you do the rough math. What does that drop us down to? Um, drops us maybe four point seven, four point eight?
No, you get, if we get us below. The five.
Yeah, four point seven.
Pulling up my spreadsheet.
And then while you do that, the next question is, what are the implications?
Yeah.
For if that happens. To Lindsay's point, which is a good one.
Oh, I think it's, um. What it would cost for, um, borrowing money.
Well, that's what we're gonna, yeah.
Now it's.
If the, if we added the six hundred thousand, it would bring it down to four point five eight.
Four point five eight, okay, so even lower than I thought, so four point five eight. And what are the implications of going below five percent?
Gale, do you know?
I would need, I would need to actually go back and check and see if we have ever been. Below.
Oh, yes, let me ask a real question slightly differently, right, it's a conquered policy, five. And so the question is. Is that something higher than other towns or what would? The bond market and others kind of look at that and say, geez.
Exactly.
Out of four point five in ten years, basically. And, and are the implications as to how they might view that, particularly with the fact that we've got some school borrowing coming up?
Yes, they do take. If they think from a free, from a bonding, it could be, it most likely would be a cause of concern with them, but they do. They do take into account all of our reserves, both restricted and stabilization funds and trust funds, so there are other items that they would look to. So it would be an item of discussion, but it may not. Result in a downgrading, it would be, it's one of the factors that they look at.
Unknown.
Parashar, so, um, you know, following up on Lindsay's point, maybe it makes sense. To hold off on Article seven for the moment. Um, and defer it until we have a fuller discussion of Article twenty-five.
Well, that, and I thought where you were going with it is, can we get some opinion from our financial advisors as to. By next week's meeting? So that we have a little bit more facts, like, hey, and look at the current situation. And tell us what would the impact, what could the impact be if we go to four point five eight? And then maybe we. Hold off on this one and twenty-five until we get an answer next week.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point because, um, that helps us in our discussion, understanding the impact. Could help us in our discussion of. Article twenty-five, since one of the issues of that all along has been that they haven't specifically identified a funding source.
My, my comment is that yes, we should hold off on seven and twenty-five. But if you, you know, look at this chart, it also says we should. Hold off on.
Twenty?
Twenty, we're not twenty.
We're not, we're not talking about twenty today, twenty.
Free cash, so we know what.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Sorry, Lois?
It's okay.
Related, a, a question for Carrie, uh, did, did you, did you not say, like, or did I misunderstand? That in the past, uh, unspent funds were rolled into free cash. But now we're, we're, we've changed that, so there, you've incorporated them into the current budget, which reduces the free cash. Which is sleight of hand in a sense, I'd rather be stuck with consistently.
Such sleight of hand, but, um. In, in front of everybody. With town meeting.
So you've got a magician?
Oh, but yes, though, those funds that are being recaptured would otherwise fall to fund balance and. Be part of certified free cash.
Why make a change?
Well, we've been trying to catch up from the impact of the pandemic and, and we don't want to do this. Going forward, we've, um, each year I've hoped that, that this would be the last, I hope fiscal. Twenty-four is the last, but we're still trying to catch up on that. Um, the tier one capital. That we're, we're still now. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars below where we were pre-pandemic, hopefully we can make that up in fiscal twenty-five. In a reasonable. Um, budget increase.
So that implies then that you would, that, uh. It's a spending decision rather, but rather than an accounting decision, and it seems to me this is more of an accounting. That if we show that it's in free cash, but we're proposing to spend it, we'll spend the same either way, right?
I'm not sure I'm, I'm following. Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, rather than redirecting money to this way, if we put it. So what you're, you're suggesting is that rather than redirecting money. Um, below the line, if it went in and then came out, we would see both sides.
But I, I don't think it can go in and then come out, isn't that right, Carrie? I mean, it.
No, it, it, it certainly, it can go in and come out, it's, um, it's the timing of when. Free cash is. Certified and, um. You know, in one way you can look at it as, as a change in practice, we, we don't use free cash for operating, I understand this, these funds would be free cash. But, but this money is, had been appropriated for operating purposes to begin with, I mean, I.
So if we follow that, will we not just spend down all of our free cash, because we won't be replenishing it?
We're definitely replenishing it at a slower rate than what we had before, but part, I mean, part of it is. We, we used to be extremely conservative in revenue projections and a lot of our free cash, when we had eleven million dollars in free cash. It's because we were very, very conservative with our non-property tax. Revenue estimates, and so we would bring in a million dollars more than what we had estimated. Because we were being too conservative, so we've tried to tighten that up. Um, and that's part of the reason we're seeing lower amounts of free cash.
Would it be at the risk of increasing the, going closer to the levy limit in case we. Go ahead with this and then we realize next year, it's really, we're, we're way below the five percent, so. We have to increase the levy limit or go get closer to the levy limit, would that not be a risk there?
We, well, we're, we're much closer to the levy limit than we ever have been, yeah, we, we're very good at spending money here. Um, and, and that, that's part of the reason why on the town side we want to do. The strategic, develop a strategic plan so we can identify what are we trying to do and, and then be able to say, you know what, we can't. We can't do, we're not doing anymore here, this, the service level is, is X, we're not going to Y. We're not trying to go to Y, we're staying at X. Uh, because we're, we're getting close, we're, we're using our free cash, we don't have a lot in stabilization funds, we don't have a whole lot of. Um, excess levy capacity, I think it's great to reach out to the financial advisor. Um, he, he can give you. Um, a, a, a potential read on what he's saying, um, not following a policy. Is not, is, is gonna be a black mark. So if our policy said four percent. It would be better to be at four percent following the policy than a policy that says five to ten and you're not at, you're not there. Uh, but you know, from seeing that scorecard, the credit rating scorecard, we. If it was just a pure mathematical equation, we would not be a triple A rated community based on what we have, it's the. It's the wealth factors that are being overweighted in, in our rating right now.
So it sounds like. Well, let's get the information, maybe even have them come in next week. Twenty minutes, so we can ask them direct questions, if we have any.
The bond raiders?
Oh, yeah. And hold off on. Any movement on Article seven and twenty-five until next week.
And I just, I, I have just one other question or observation that I, I'd like either confirmed or, or to be told I'm wrong. Um, my understanding is that the reason that that money isn't going into free cash. That it's being, um. It's being used outside of that, um, is. That that's the way the town met the guidelines. And is that, is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's not, this isn't. An arbitrary decision, this is a decision that the town made. Based on its fulfillment of its obligation to meet the guidelines that we set. So I just think that should be part of the discussion as we're thinking about the impact of, of that money. Of how we're handling money going into free cash now.
Yes, but I think we did by voting affirmative action on the budget. I think we made a decision that we were okay taking the six, was it six hundred thousand and some change? And putting it towards salaries and compensation, et cetera, to basically meet the. Meet the. Objectives of making sure we can attract, rotate and develop our town employees.
Yeah, that's why I think this conversation is part of the conversation about the. Request for funding for the twenty, two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary celebration. Because that's the number wasn't in the budget.
Yeah, so seven and twenty-five, Lois, is what we're gonna wait off.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Articles, Article twenty-six. Those who wants to open, Chris or. Remember if you had.
It is, uh, let me just pull up my sheet. Item E. There are too many unknowns at this time on that.
That's Warner's bomb.
What? Warner's bomb. And we will not have any information on that until the, um. The committee actually votes on it. So we may be pulling, you know, we may be holding off on that one up until town meeting if they don't come to a decision prior to that. Um. I, I find that it's. Personally, I find that, um, the timing is really off in terms of when. The meeting tomorrow night is being held. Um, and then they're gonna have a second meeting, and so we have to wait until after those and they have. An assessment of the surveys, et cetera, before they even get to the FinCom, excuse me, and, and the CPC. Um, and then the CPC has to weigh in on it. I don't, I don't feel comfortable at all because one of the things we could do, even if the CPC decides yes in favor of it. We have the, the right as any other person at town meeting to take that off the, uh, to take that off of the article. So we can do that, so we can hold off until the evening of town meeting if we want to.
Can I ask a process question, so I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but. In the interest of not necessarily throwing up a roadblock because of legitimate concerns around the timing.
Yeah.
If we vote affirmative action on this and if it passes town meeting. Would the mon- the money wouldn't be spent until all the other elements fall in place, right? So then if the elements don't fall in place, can't they reappropriate for other purposes? Is that right? Yeah, no, because if that's the case, then. Then why might throw up a unnecessary roadblock?
Diane Proctor, fifty-seventh Sudbury Road, uh, Chair of the CPC, um, if they don't spend the money, it's not, it's not, if they don't need that money. It reverts back to us. I mean, they would just never spend it and will come to us. Um, it's, it is right now in abeyance, I mean, we, we need to hear more specifics. Uh, we may remove it. Um, ourselves from our presentation, we may say, actually cross that one out because it's, it's premature, we don't know what they're doing. And so we need to hold.
And they already have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars being held.
Right. You know, so I, I just think that, you know, we're gonna need more specifics before we go forward. And our committee feels fairly strongly about that, so we will be doggedly following this. And, um, we just hope that before, well, before town meeting, that they will have some specific recommendations. For both action and costs.
And if they don't, you'll come to town meeting with this struck out, is that what?
I think then the committee would have to deliberate, I can't speak for the committee on that, but my presumption is. That some people in our committee would say then we need to cut that one right out, others would say, let's go forward and if they don't expend that money. Then it reverts to us, but in either case, it is, it's something we're watching very carefully.
Okay, so then maybe we, then we just wait.
So, so we don't, so we don't make a decision, we hold it, we hold it off?
Yeah, we hold it off.
Until they decide.
Um, I, I, I think, uh, Carmen Reese, town moderator, I think you're talking just about, uh, item B in the.
E, Warner's bomb.
Oh, Warner's bomb, right, okay, all right, so, um, thi- this is one of those articles that it's very easy. To take apart for votes at town meeting. Uh, and so, uh. Even, even if this goes on the consent calendar, someone can take a single item off the consent calendar. even, even if this goes on the consent calendar, someone can take a single item off the consent calendar without taking the whole article off. So it's certainly open to the finance committee to make a recommendation on, uh, vote on a recommendation to town meeting on all items except that one under this article, and then just hold that item until later if you wish. That's an option.
Yeah, but they could come back and reappropriate line items. So until, I'd rather wait. Until we know what they're gonna do.
I think it's good to have their, um, information before we make a decision, how they're thinking about it.
But that's good information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen.
Um, Henry Dane, Chair of the Concord Two-Fiftieth Committee. Uh, I understand your, your issue with the, uh, source of the funds. Um, but the events that we're talking about will, will occur.
I'm sorry.
Will occur whether we have the money to deal with them or not. Um, and what we're trying to do is because we know that these expenditures will actually arise over a period of the next two years is to try and spread out the amount over the period of time. In nineteen seventy-five, um, special legislation was passed um, to deal with the fact that, uh, so that money could be accumulated over a period of years to cover the expenses that were would be concentrated in the, in the last year where most of them occur, because that's when the large expenses are, the crowd management and the events that will be inevitable at the, at the Old North Bridge. And which is is a national event, whether we want it to be one or not, which is why Gerald Ford arrived in a helicopter on the s- soccer field at Finn School, uh, for the event in nineteen seventy-five. But if if you, uh, if we don't get some of the money this year, we will just have to be back next year and be asking for more. Um, and so we really, it's a situation we need to deal with because it is, it is going to happen, and we need to do a good job of it and do it right. This is, um, is something that is, um, uh, a responsibility of this town to the history of, you know, to our history and the history of our nation. So, um, if there's some other way that we can manage this, let's find a way to do it.
So, so Henry, how much of the six hundred thousand were you actually thinking would be spent for fiscal year twenty-four? It sounds like you're saying some of that.
Twenty-seventy-five. My guess is that my guess is that in the next fiscal year, no more than half of it will be spent. But that means that we're gonna have to I don't know, call it front or back loaded as we approach because, because the following fiscal year is the last year in which we can make an appropriation in time to have the funds for April of, of twenty-twenty-five. We can appropriate them in April of twenty-twenty-five because then they won't be available until the, until it's too late.
So can I make a request? Uh, and it may have been on the slides, but they went by pretty quick. Partly my fault, the Russian people long. But maybe a schedule of anticipated expenditures for twenty-four and twenty-five? Cause I heard up to two million, right?
Wait, wait.
Total.
I think we can.
And so that implies six hundred and one point four, but now if we're saying three hundred, you're now saying that might be one point two, if I'm interpreting this correctly.
It's just gonna look worse next year.
I, I understand, but I think it's helpful for us because if you're gonna come back.
All right.
I mean, there's, there's a lot on the plate for fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah.
Right, so I think we need to see the fuller picture of what might actually end up happening, not just for your expenditures, but we've got school get payments that start and sorts of other things.
Yeah.
So maybe just one slide with the schedule would be helpful before next meeting, before next week.
Let's see what we can do.
Okay.
Um, by the way, um, our speaker in the public safety, I don't know, he, he did not identify himself. He was a member of our committee. He's Fred Ryan, who was, was a police chief for, in Arlington for twenty years. Was a deputy chief in Concord before that. Um, and he's, uh, very experienced in the kinds of things he was talking about.
Oh, we believe him.
And, um.
So the money and shit.
So anyway, we appreciate your consideration.
Yep. And just, just a, um, question for Henry. Henry, um, have you approached the state? I mean, or trying to find funding? No, I don't want to get started on that.
Well, approached the estate, we have, uh, was mentioned that, uh, Mike Lawson, who, um, the select board appointed as our delegate to these state commission. Uh, we've been in contact with him and it seems quite clear at this point, they have no money to spend.
Okay.
And the money that they have to spend, we don't know how they're gonna spend it. They are likely to spend it on state events, not on local events. And my understanding is that they may focus on funding specific events rather than funding s- specific towns or committees. So but there's nothing forthcoming from them that we know of. Uh, but we're working on that, and the same thing goes with federal funding. There is a, there is a federal committee which very interesting, interestingly enough, has a lot of very well-known people on it. Uh, but none of them are from Massachusetts. So, um, I think we're, we're fairly, I think we're pretty much on our own. And when you talk about cooperation, like from Lexington, they have their own show. They're not, we are cooperating with them, but in a, in a number of ways, they are our competitor. Like, we remember, uh, one of the longest debates that we ever had at town meeting uh, years ago was over whether our flagpole should be higher than theirs.
Who won?
We did.
If you call having a higher flagpole winning. Yeah, we will.
Again, a small victory.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions, comments? All right, so before we have a motion adjourned, I just have one piece of heads up for all the committee members. Um, a number of us, including Chris and Lois and Peggy, have developed some ideas to, uh, for next year's finance committee to improve processes a bit broader participation as well as succession planning. So we've put together some thoughts on pieces of paper. We'll distribute those after today's meeting. Uh, so you guys can take a look, and then we'll add it as an agenda item next week. And of course, it'll be up to the finance committee that's sitting in May to hopefully act on some of those, but wanted to socialize it with everybody. If folks stop to, uh, think about it, et cetera, and subtract relief uh, in May. So they're gonna be here in May. All right, so look out for that. Thank you. And can I get a motion? Brian, did you have anything to add or anything? Hold on, hold on. Just give Brian a chance, uh.
No, 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 no questions related to the minutes, and I think we closed that. We'll, we'll be revisiting, um, uh, Article Twenty-five, so I think, I think no comments on my side, thanks.
Okay, seven and Twenty-five. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.